Good morning, everyone. Is Pastor Steve Young here? You could introduce yourself first if you don't mind.
My name is Steve Young. I'm the pastor at Islander Alliance Church on Merritt Island.
Thank you.
Let's pray. Dear God, we thank you so much for this beautiful day. We thank you for each person here and, Lord, the privilege and the opportunity to be here. Lord, we thank you for your love for us. And God, we pray that you would just guide this meeting. We pray for each person, for our county leaders. God, that you would give them wisdom and discernment. And, Lord God, that the decisions that are made would be honoring and glorifying to you. Lord, we praise you and thank you. And say all this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you very much. And with that, I'd like to welcome everyone to the February 22nd Board of County Commissioner meeting, and I'll call this meeting to order. All right, Commissioner Loebert.
If you all would join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every inch of its power.
All right, moving on to item D. Minutes for approval. Entertained a motion?
Motion to approve.
Could we pull F1? No, I'm sorry, I'm one step ahead. Minutes, okay. Sorry, it's the start of an interesting week. Second, that's what I meant.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Loebert. And I should say, we have Commissioner Smith by phone. Commissioner Smith, can you hear us okay?
I can indeed.
Thank you. Sorry, I forgot to mention.
Should we have a motion to address his telephonic voting first, perhaps? Would that be all right?
Is that necessary?
We've done it before, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Pritchett, would you mind withdrawing your motion? You can make it in a second. It is to the minutes, so that we can address Commissioner Smith first.
Do we have to, or we had a quorum? I mean, we already had a-
Yeah, we already have-
As long as he doesn't vote for it, I think we're fine.
I don't think he did. But I was saying-
But I'm saying for this next one, we just can't count his vote toward the minutes then.
I make a motion to add Commissioner Smith to the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett to add Commissioner Smith, or to allow Commissioner Smith to attend and vote telephonically, second by Commissioner Loebert. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And Commissioner Smith, if for any reason you feel like you can't be heard, don't be afraid to shout out. That's perfectly acceptable. All right. Item E1, Ms. Nazario? Can you come up?
One of my kids is outside trying to find her way here.
That's okay. We've all been there. I've had some frantically text me during a meeting because they're having some crisis, and I say, "I have to go. I can't talk right now." And I appreciate you giving me this honor of doing this resolution every year because I think it's so important, and I think it's not talked about enough. And I appreciate all the work you do for your organization, and I'll give you a chance to speak about it after we're done, if that's okay?
Thank you, and we appreciate you and the commission. Thank you.
Okay. Whereas hemophilia is a rare disorder in which your blood doesn't clot normally because it lacks sufficient blood clotting proteins. And whereas, if you have hemophilia, you may bleed for a longer time after an injury than you would if your blood clotted normally, causing weakness of the voluntary muscles. And whereas, symptoms of hemophilia may include unexplained and excessive bleeding, larger deep bruises, pain in joints, and nosebleeds without a known cause. And whereas, the Bleeding Disorders Coalition of Florida is an advocacy organization founded by the Hemophilia Foundation of Greater Florida and the Florida Hemophilia Association to be the voice of Florida Bleeding Disorders community. And whereas, the Bleeding Disorders Coalition of Florida has been serving the Bleeding Disorders community to improve their quality of life by offering programs and services such as medically supervised camp, scholarships, advocacy efforts, emergency financial assistance, and educational programs to support healthier and more independent lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of March 2022 as Hemophilia and Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month, to bring awareness, education, and support to those who are affected by hemophilia and bleeding disorders in Brevard County and throughout the world. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 22nd day of February AD 2022. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, and I'll second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm so happy to be here again with all of you. We really appreciate your support. I am actually the 2021 National Advocate of the Year for the hemophilia, so National Hemophilia Association. My son was diagnosed with von Willebrand's disease at age six. Their medication costs upwards of half a million dollars to a million dollars a year. Oh, there goes Victoria. This is one of my other hemophilia kids. She has von Willebrand's disease, like Tyler. She goes to Brevard Public Schools. And we would like to extremely enthusiastically announce that due to you guys supporting us every year, Brevard Public Schools has agreed to pass the first proclamation for Bleeding Disorder Awareness Month in the history of the nation. So we are definitely leading by example in Brevard, and I'm so happy that we're such a tight-knit community that continues to encourage awareness of so many things here. But thank you so much for addressing the needs of the bleeding disorder community. Since we don't, we're not so prevalent to the front, most people don't really think about it. But if you think about the importance of bleeding disorders, the bleeding disorder community took on the blood distribution companies with the Ricky Ray Law back at the height of the AIDS crisis. Due to that law, all blood products in the United States and around the world are tested for illnesses that could kill our bleeding disorder community, and also yourselves if you were to get a transfusion. So we just really want to thank you all for your continued support, and we look forward to continuing to work with Brevard County in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do. And thank you, guys, for coming. All right, item E3.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief Scholmeyer? If you want to bring everybody with you, that'd be great, too, or? I'm going to read this resolution. Chief Scholmeyer, when's your last day here with the county?
It is Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday?
Exactly one week or five working days.
You're not, like, counting down, right?
No.
Yeah. Whereas, Chief Mark Scholmeyer began his 33-year career with Brevard County as a firefighter recruit on February 20, 1989, and was promoted to fire chief in 2015. And whereas, Chief Scholmeyer has had many accomplishments and successes during his service to Brevard County. And among these accomplishments, Chief worked with the Brevard County Commissioners to increase critical funding for fire rescue and to help stabilize competitive pay for Brevard County Fire Rescue. And whereas, Chief Scholmeyer developed a seven-year plan emphasizing the significance of organizational structure, as well as taking care of our most important assets, our people. Chief Scholmeyer received his MPA from FIT December 2018, and has received the Brevard County Commendable Service Award in Ribbon in 2006, Brevard County Officer of the Year 2006, Brevard County Unit Citation 2009 and 2013 as well, named 2017 Space Coast Fire Chief of the Year. Whereas, Chief Scholmeyer's leadership helped bring Brevard County Fire Rescue to the efficient and safe department we enjoy today. And whereas, through Chief Scholmeyer's dedicated service, Brevard County is a safer place, and he will be greatly missed for years to come. Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve this on this day, February 22, 2022.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Loebert. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you for the kind words. On February 20th, 2022, I completed my 33rd year with Brevard County Fire Rescue. It's been a long and exciting journey since my humble beginnings here. It all started as a volunteer firefighter with Marin Island Volunteer Fire Department. And after my first 24-hour shift, I was hooked. I rode every chance I got until I got hired by Brevard County Fire Rescue a little over a year and a half later, on February 20th, 1989. Throughout my career, I was served in almost every rank, from recruit, firefighter, EMT, lieutenant, lieutenant EMT, district chief, and assistant chief. Over the years, I had the opportunity to serve the various communities, various firehouses throughout the county, including Station 82, 80, 40, 43, 64, 24, 26, 42, 47, and 60. The experiences, educational opportunities that have been afforded to me over the years have helped me grow into the person I am today. The memories I have made and the friendships forged during those years with BCFR will stick with me forever. I am grateful for the hundreds of dedicated BCFR personnel doing great things every day to make this county a safer place. We truly have the best department in east-central Florida. My last seven years as fire chief have been both challenging and rewarding. I wouldn't have traded it for the world. A wise deputy chief once said, "There has never been a popular and well-liked fire chief in a physically challenged fire department." There's much truth to that statement. And that has been my biggest challenge in my career until recently with the approval of the fire assessment and our seven-year plan. Like I've said for years, the fire chief's job would be really easy if it weren't for people, politics, and money. I'm kidding. All that aside, it's been a great ride and a memorable career. The fire service has evolved over the past 33 years, and the department has adapted over time to meet these changes, some for better and some for worse. The key is that we are moving forward and making progress. We've endured large storm events, significant wildfires, and some of the worst human tragedies over the years, yet we stay the course and get the job done. The key to our successes has been the resilience of our department, which is directly related to our talented and diverse workforce. So now it's time to say farewell. It's time to hang up my fire chief hat, my PIO hat, my social media hat, and turn off the radio that has been on for 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for the last seven years or so. What will not be over is the wavering support of my family, in particular my wife Jessica, from keeping me company at events, visiting members in the hospital, baking and delivering pumpkin cheesecakes to stations on Thanksgiving Day. She has been by my side. For all her hard work and support, she has been unofficially titled the free assistant to the fire chief. She's been my biggest support mechanism and my inspiration to get up every morning at 5:00 AM and do what I do every single day. With that being said, on March 1st, 2022, I will be retiring from Brevard County Fire Rescue. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve this community and lead this department of talented professionals who are dedicated to protecting property and lives in Brevard County each and every day. Thank you.
Commissioner Loebert?
And if I could just give a brief shout-out, I know he's not going to want me to. But seven years ago, two men gave me a chance to lead a department that I grew up in, and that was Frank Abate and Stockton Witten. I owe them everything for this opportunity to serve as your fire chief for the past seven years, and I appreciate everything you've done for me.
Commissioner Loebert?
That's tough to follow up, and I'm going to give it a shot. So as you are likely aware, there were two resolutions, one recognizing you, this one, and one honoring you. That was mine. I did something that's difficult for me to do. I was diplomatic for once and said, "Okay, you can put mine on consent. That's fine." Apparently, this was a more serious, formal one. Mine was a little more lighthearted. I think there were some parts there that maybe you and I might have appreciated that might not have gone over as well with a different audience. But I did want to take a moment, not only to congratulate you, but also to thank your family for having spared you or lent you to us over a period of over three decades. So if your wife or your family wants to say something as well, okay, she's saying no, all right, I won't put you on the spot. I just wanted to give them a shout-out and say thank you to them, because I can only imagine how many times you would probably rather have been home, where they would have rather had you home, where you had other obligations that prevented you from doing that. I can tell you in the time that I've been here, admittedly, which is not as long as any of the other commissioners up here, I have had so many good interactions with you over so many, both good and bad, events. I have nothing but good to say. So congratulations. I know you have to sit out for a year, but if you're bored and you want to volunteer during the year unpaid, you're welcome to come to my office, hang out. I'll find something for you to do. I will feed and water you if that's what it takes. Just let me know.
So a funny thing happened this morning. So I've cleaned out my office and my truck. I literally have a computer, a coffee maker, and two shirts. And so this morning, I was nervous for some reason, I don't know why, I've been up here plenty of times before. And I put my shirt on, I get in the parking lot, and Tom Klein says, "Hey, where's your badge at?" I literally had a shirt with no badge, so this isn't even my rank, it's not my badge, I just showed up with a blank T-shirt on, so. I don't know, it's one of those days, so.
That's cute. Thank you for your service. And, you know, you don't, people don't see the extra things that you do, and it was a pretty awesome experience to walk into that Honor Flight. And I don't know if people that don't know what Honor Flight is, but we take veterans to their war memorials, and it was neat to see you on that flight as a volunteer, not just as a medical person, but just to watch you hold your head down and not brag about who you were, and just to be there just to help those veterans. So thank you for what you do, you know, what you've done for us and what you do outside of this job.
I think I'll have plenty more time to go on this trip, so.
They're exciting, aren't they?
Yeah.
All right, we'll go down. All right. We're all going down. Yes.
He's even got this lovely little F7 tool. So one for you, one for your wife.
We haven't voted on it?
No, the consent one.
Oh.
He's just, yeah, he's just saying we haven't voted on the other one. I think he's probably going to get it, though.
All right, moving on to consent. Commissioner Loebert, you said you had some items you wanted to pull?
F1. Sorry, I was kind of chomping at the bit on that one earlier.
Motion to approve, ma'am, but F1.
Okay, the commission doesn't have anything else they want to pull? All right, motion to approve consent agenda minus F1 by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Loebert. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Loebert?
All right, I won't take too long on this one, and frankly, whatever you all want to do, I'm good with. I got an email from another elected official who serves on the Port Authority yesterday indicating, I don't know if it was a mistake of the applicant, a mistake of the application process, or someone involved in it, but there was apparently a second applicant who wanted to be considered that somehow fell through the cracks, whether due to their fault or someone else's fault, I really don't know. And I, seeing as how this is an alternate spot, I would like to give the League of Cities the opportunity to take a look and see whether or not they want to consider this other person. I have no issue approving it as it is, but given that there was some concern expressed to me yesterday, and given that this is an alternate, I don't mind sending it back to League of Cities and saying, "Hey, if you don't want to consider him, fine. If you want to consider him, fine. If you're good with your original choice, fine." But just to allow a second person to be considered, if that's what they choose to do.
And we asked, we inquired about this item, so Ms. Barker?
There were actually six applications received, as explained in the agenda item. The vacancy was advertised. All six applications were submitted to the League of Cities. They reviewed those six, and they made their selection. Their selection is in your agenda packet.
Was that applicant on the-
Yes, he was, Ms. McLaughlin. Yes.
So he was considered?
Yes, he was.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, I just got this yesterday, and it's one of those things where frankly-
Right, I received it last night, and I confirmed that he was in the selection packet that they reviewed, yes.
Okay, that's good to know. Never mind.
Yeah, our office asked, just to make sure that it was done properly, our office asked the same question, that's why.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, it's, if we didn't get it yesterday, I think we would have all been on the same page, but no, I appreciate it. I'll go ahead and move to approve then.
I have a motion to approve F1 by Commissioner Loebert?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tabaya. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Moving on to public comments. Nathan Schlescher?
Good morning. Nathan Schlescher, 820 Allen Dell Street. I'm here today because I want to follow up on last meeting. I brought forward a public notice presented in Hometown News Brevard and requested that Brevard County send a request to the DEP for a public hearing for Brevard County residents. So I have received information from two commissioners' offices, and I'm very thankful for the responses that I have gotten. I don't feel that the public has been satisfied with any information we've seen come from the DEP or from the offices we've received. So again, I'm just here to follow up and see if we can get that request for the citizens of Brevard County.
Since you have a little more time left, would you mind just kind of reiterating it, if that's all right?
Yeah, so on February 4th, I received a SpaceX permit that was posted by the DEP or by SpaceX, I'm not sure who posted it, in the Hometown News Brevard newspaper. And the public notice stated that SpaceX is requesting the right to dump 0.003 million gallons a day of non-treated wastewater into the Indian River Lagoon through Oyster Prong, which sits across from Titusville, just north of 405, on Merritt Island. The, we did receive a map with the plan that shows the water flowing from the proposed SpaceX hangar X, and it just shows arrows going into the lagoon. There's not much information that came with the map we received. So at this point, I'm just looking to see if we can get that public meeting so we can get a presentation. There may be filtration in the ponds or in the canals that it goes through, I'm not sure. That's what we're looking for.
To my understanding-
Commissioner Pritchett had her light on.
Apologize.
Hi, Mr. Schlescher. I have been working with Ms. Virginia, and she said she will have this ready before the March 5th deadline. So I went back and forth with her yesterday, the newspaper contacted me as well. So we just need a little bit more time, and I'll have you more data, and then we'll be able to make a decision on move forward with the public meeting.
Okay. The March 5th deadline, the next commission meeting would be after that.
I'm not sure that it would be that hard for us to call them and request them to do it as well.
Okay.
So I think if you would just give us a little bit more time, Ms. Virginia Barker's been working on this, correct, ma'am? And she sent me a text letting me know that she would have it ready before that, for the deadline, so that we would be able to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and talking to us, too. I certainly appreciate it, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Daniel McDowell?
Thank you, Chairperson Zanka and Vice Chair.
Councilman McDowell.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. No, I mean, I should have introduced you that way, I apologize.
No, that's great. Thank you, Chair and Vice Chair and Commissioners. Daniel McDowell, 1034 Bryce Lane, West Melbourne. And this is interesting timing, because I am here about the Indian River Lagoon as well. But I wanted to mention that a couple of weeks ago, when I was here at the commission, Commissioner Smith had mentioned about, you know, we have almost a $2 billion budget. No one ever gives us the feedback about the dollars spent. I just want to get, be here today to say thank you, okay? And that it is important to know that you are approving dollars that are well-spent in our cities. And I had planned, I'm a little out of sequence, because I was planning to get in front of the Citizens Oversight Committee to give them the thank you as well. We have a project in West Melbourne, a retention pond that had been sourced financially through three sources, including the Indian River Lagoon. So I just am here today to tell you that you had approved roughly, it was just a little under $200,000 for that project that was in excess of $1 million. So we thank you for that. But more importantly, it- But more importantly, it addressed two environmentally concerned issues for the city of West Melbourne, both addressing the flooding or reducing flooding risk in some of our older neighborhoods, but the second part of that is also the discharges into the Indian River Lagoon. And if I got our numbers correctly, just because they're relatively large numbers that will annually reduce it by 1,317 pounds of nitrogen, 400 pounds of phosphorus, and another almost 40,000 pounds of suspended solids. And I won't, I have no idea exactly what that solids are, but that is no longer going to be going, flowing into the lagoon as a result of this. So, thank you very much for approving that. Any questions about that? We are going to have a ribbon cutting for this retention pond, and we'll be getting a invite to you for that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Sandra Sullivan?
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. I have a concern about transparency, and I've been seeing increasing concern with regard to records that are not on agendas, and more specifically, more recently, with public records. I have public records outstanding going back a few months now. I've talked to various county people. But more recently, last week, there was a budget meeting, and I would like to read what was stated. My concern, this is D1, my concern is I know we're going to come together as a commission to take a vote, but I think Ms. Barker is really getting a lot of push on something, and I think this needs to come before the county commission, before she has to start responding to some of these things, records requests, that they are calling action items. And she has done a great job, and the emails are beating her up a bit, and I don't like them. I received an email also regarding my concern with this statement, said, "No one said what you were stating," from D1. The question I would like to ask this commission for legal opinion from your attorney is whether state law for the public records was violated, given that this statement, to me, indicates an intent to delay records until after a vote. So, that would be first and foremost. Secondly, I just want to say, I have done records requests on a number of things lately. One, where one of the directors sent out an email for a change of vendor. I inquired on why there was a change of vendor, at whose authorization. That remains unfulfilled as a records request. I did numerous records requests on that issue of a change of vendor without going to RFP per county policy of any opportunity over $15,000 goes out to bid. I was given some misinformation, which I corrected via public records I found elsewhere, and it remains unresolved. I also did another records request where it was, what I got back for records was incomplete, and I found other records by going to another public entity and got the records I was seeking. So, that raises a question. And then, thirdly, with regarding the Save the Lagoon and digging into those records, and I have some serious concerns about the lack of fiscal reporting on where the money is going. So, to not get these records and to have a pushback to not fulfill the records prior to today, where a vote will be taken on the lagoon plan, is exceedingly concerning to me from a transparency to the public. Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I saw some information getting passed around, so I went ahead and got transcripts. And Ms. Sullivan, I appreciate all that you bring to the commission. Matter of fact, most of the things you send around, most of us get, so I certainly appreciate it. The comment at that time, and I've got it verbatim here, is when we had the discussion, the request to the commission is that we got information, because there was a loop of information going around that we didn't have, and we were in the dark with, and we need to make decisions this week. And the request was that Ms. Barker wouldn't be having to do anything outside of her typical parameters. And the question came up about public records, and the statement, I said, "I'm not saying public records. I'm talking specifically about action items," till we got to the Tuesday meeting. So, there's been a lot of, I believe, taking something with a little bit of truth and making it into something different. Ma'am, I don't fault you for that, because you're always at all the meetings. But I think when we get some more conversation here later, perhaps, I don't know, but I had great concern that the county commission wasn't getting information. I think that you might have been getting other people from bringing the emails, which got me interested, because you're sending us information, and I didn't know where the email trails came from. So, again, your statement was that you wanted to know the legality of us doing something to stop public records, and that was never the intent or the spirit of that meeting, and we said that over and over during that meeting specifically. So, I just want to get the record straight with that, and Madam Chair, that's all I have to say, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Loeb?
Just a couple of thoughts, and I'm not going to opine as to a specific example or hypothetical, but if I've got a question that pertains to sunshine law, generally what I'll do is I'll go and I'll pull up the sunshine manual. If you go to Google or any other search engine, you put in sunshine manual, it's probably going to be the first or the second result. And for something like this, just sitting here, I typed in Ctrl+F to do find, and then put in unjustified delay, and there's a whole section on it. So, I can tell you, when we're talking about action items, and I don't want to repeat much of what Commissioner Pritchett said, but if the action items aren't public record requests, I don't know that that's something that would necessarily in any way apply. If they are public record requests, perhaps it's a different story, but, you know, I can at least say that I appreciate with respect to what Commissioner Pritchett mentioned, as far as things being perhaps misperceived or taken differently than intended. It is a problem, not necessarily with this or just with this, but in general, where there is some truth to something, and it is taken and kind of becomes something of urban legend or myth. But I would just say, as far as the commission looking into whether or not another commissioner violated sunshine law, my question would be to what end? And if we find that that happened, what would you like to do? Because frankly, there are other entities that can investigate this that really have much greater authority to do something, whether it's this or something that I've done, or something that any of the other commissioners have done. But I just, I don't know that this entity is the best entity to even look into something like that. But, you know, I appreciate that there may be some concerns with respect to public records, and if staff's ever gotten the impression from any of us that we want any records delayed, I'd like to dispel that. I don't think any of us, certainly, I'm not trying to delay the production of anything. There are certain justifiable delays, but I think apart from very, very few justifiable delays that are recognized by law, I don't know of any instance in which staff has, at least to my knowledge, intentionally delayed for the purpose of obstructing. I'm not saying that it hasn't happened, because there may be some instance in which I'm not aware of, but I just have not seen something where I can say conclusively, you know, they've essentially attempted to obstruct public records law by delaying to the point that something is, you know, no longer relevant, or just to delay for the sake of delaying.
Okay, that's all the items, or all the cards I have under public comments. We have no public hearings, so we'll move on to item I1. Commissioner Tobia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'd like to begin by thanking Commissioner Smith for bringing this to the board's attention. Had he not gone through that work, I would not have been aware of this. And so, I greatly appreciate that. I have two handouts that have not changed since they were put in the agenda packets. I just wanted you to have an extra copy. However, there is one small change, and I'll explain that in a minute, from what was proposed at our last meeting. Also, one thing that I needed clearing up, an issue had arisen. So, the first talk, Commissioner Smith mentioned enforcement on some of, some inscrupulous tow truck companies. And so, I, my office drafted up a memo. This is just a draft. I'm more than willing to have any changes whatsoever, just to let the, as mentioned previously, the state attorney and the sheriff know that this is something that our constituents are dealing with, and sending, bringing that to their attention. I know they have a lot on their plate, just letting them know that this is something that is important, important to us. And second of all, dealing with the rates. So, during the board report, I stated my intention, bringing a proposed resolution. The resolution mirrors the county towing rates that is delineated in the spreadsheet there. This does the same things that were mentioned, and also incorporates the great ideas that were laid out by the District 1 Commissioner, making sure that Brevard County had the lowest fees. So, the, I won't go over in detail, because, you know, it's been discussed, but this would incorporate those two factors. Number one, getting rid of the unique fees in Brevard County that only Brevard County, Seminole, Volusia, Orange, and Polk do not have, as well as making sure that we are the lowest. Now, in full disclosure, this does decrease some fees. It also increases some fees. So, I think the decreases are more substantial than the increases, but nonetheless, I think it brings us quite a bit more in line. The question I had, based on the discussion, was due to the fact that there were a couple fees that Brevard County had and only one of the other counties had. So, if you look at that on the county towing rate, Class A, extra manpower, you'll notice that currently we charge $51.35. However, Seminole County does not charge anything, Volusia County does not charge anything, Orange County does not charge anything, Polk County does, they charge $55. So, Commissioner Pritchett wanted, mentioned her compromise was us be the lowest. Well, the lowest would be zero. I didn't know if that was the intent. I hadn't done this analysis at that point, so I would proffer four options. Number one, make us truly the lowest at zero. Number two, combine the average of the four counties, which would be $13.75. Option three would be to leave it where we are, which would be $51.35. Or option four would be to match the lowest that actually does charge, which is the only one, which would make it $55. I did not know the intent of where Commissioner Pritchett, of course, I wish I could have reached out, but with sunshine, obviously, that is not an option. So, that was, the same there is extra manpower in Class B, C, and D, but other than that, the resolution incorporates what, exactly what was discussed previously, again, deleting all of the unique fees and bringing us in line with the other counties, making sure that we were the lowest. Additionally, real quickly, you'll notice at the bottom, the separate charges, which were not included on the first one, there are a number of those, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of them, some pretty substantial. For instance, airbags down at the bottom, for some strange reason, I don't know what that means. Brevard County charges $399.44. Seminole County charges zero. Volusia County charges zero. Orange County charges zero. Polk County charges zero. And I know these are separate fees, but I want to point out that in the Orange County ordinance, it goes as far as to say, and quote, "No additional fees or charges shall be made for special equipment or services." So, in fact, some of the other counties find these extra fees so nefarious, not only do they not include them, they say, "We won't even deal with them." So, I think that those certainly need to be stricken, and that's in the resolution. So, I, what I was, three things I would be asking for is the direction of the board when it came to the options of making us the lowest, the average, leaving where we are, or increasing us to the county that does charge us. Number two, see if anyone had any changes, and if you were still interested in going forward with the memo to the state attorney and the sheriff. And number three, approving the resolution with the county towing rates, as suggested the last meeting, with the great ideas incorporated from District 1. So, those are the three points that I would be asking, Madam Chair, and certainly open it up for discussion, if it's okay with you.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Loeb?
Okay, first, I have no concern whatsoever. I just read through your memo that was distributed today. It's simple and short enough that I've had a chance to look at it. It looks absolutely fine. If you want to make a motion to have that signed by the chair and to go out to the sheriff and the state, I have no objection whatsoever to that. I'm happy to second that and support that. As to the tow rates, I'll tell you, I really would like to wait until March 8th, when we have Commissioner Smith back, as this was essentially his baby, bringing the item up. I'm not today prepared to adjust the rates, as we don't have Commissioner Smith here. I'm happy to do it on the 8th, but I would like to have him here in person so that he can participate a little more meaningfully in the discussion. But if you want to make a motion as to the memo, I'm happy to support that today.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I agree, Loeb, I would like to be, and I would have the time at meeting to look at the proposals that Mr. Black, and I would also, the opportunity to really focus on the meeting that I had by then. I met last Florida, and got, I have a meeting with sheriff next week to get his input, and then I can bring, I, first meeting in March.
Commissioner Tobia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just of note, this was all at the last meeting, but I understand the issues that, the telephone issues that Commissioner Smith may be having, and I certainly respect, and since he was the individual that brought this forth, I would be more than willing to, with your indulgence, table it to that meeting. I would like to deal with two issues, though. The first, the memo, just to take that off the table. And then, the second one is to get Commissioner Pritchett's suggestion on the, so I can bring back a complete proposal, what her intent, and listen, I'm okay with any of the four, to be very clear, for the extra manpower, so I can fill in the blank when I bring back the proposal on the 8th.
You want me?
Yeah.
I liked your spreadsheet again, by the way. Did you do it? Sorry, I'm having a little fun.
No.
And Commissioner Smith brought his. I thought he was trying to compete with yours. I like what you brought forth here. I would love to hear what the other commissioners have, but I think your compromise is actually pretty good. It raised the rates in some places and eliminated them in others, and I think it'll make us, I think it'll bring more money for the tow drivers without having to try to figure out the extra manpower per hour. So, I think this is a good suggestion, but thank you for waiting for Commissioner Smith, because I'm interested in hearing what his thoughts are on it as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to fill, if you notice, there's some question marks on the extra manpower.
Yeah.
I just, you know, and I'm not asking you to vote on this right now. I'm just asking what the intent was, because I, you know, didn't want to, the other ones were easy enough to figure out. You said, "Make sure that we're the lowest." But on, like I mentioned previously, for the extra manpower, some counties don't charge anything, and one county charges something. Would you like us to match the zero, or match the $55, or average? And listen, we're not voting on this. I just want to bring back something that doesn't have question marks at the next time. What was the intent?
Well, on each of these blocks that you have... Well, on each of these blocks that you have them, it would look consistent to be able to do the zero, because I'm, I'm looking across the numbers.
I'm not going to argue with that.
Yeah.
With that.
I don't see anything outlandish that would cause it not to be the zero at this point, so I, I think they all look like relatively good numbers, especially comparing with Seminole County. So my, my first instinct right now would, would to go with the zero, but I'd love to hear from the rest of you.
And we'll do, Madam Chair will do that on the 8th, with your permission.
Okay, I have a card. Sandra Sullivan?
So what I learned after the last meeting on this topic is that this resolution was written by a lobbyist that represents himself as Kendall Towing, as well as Tron Towing, one of his clients. It concerns me when a resolution is sent to a commissioner, and that resolution, as written by the lobbyist, is presented here on, at a meeting, when obviously, he's representing himself and his clients, and not the county's interests. And I see a concern with the influence of the lobbyists here that, that gives me some heartburn. Here, you know, our, our way that we operate is free market, that's what we value in America, is a free market. And I understand some other counties actually send out for bid for their towing, and I would like to suggest as another option to consider, is to send this out to an RFP with what, the line items that you decide, and see what you get back as a, a free market bids from all of the towing companies, or the towing companies that want to bid on that, and go through a, a formal selection process with that, to make it free market, so that the county gets the best value, the best market-driven prices, instead of the lobbyists driving the prices and negotiating with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the question would be for Commissioner Smith. Did you get the opportunity to look at the memo, or would you rather us wait? I just want to get one thing off the, the table, and this was your suggestion as well, is to let the powers that be know that this was something that was concerning to us. Would you rather wait on that memo, or would you rather have, I'm, I'm willing to, you know, wait till the 8th, if you would rather, or would you rather deal with that in two weeks?
Yeah, personally, it's any difference to me, but in, I would just wait to them and start putting it at that time.
Did you get wait out of that? You're cutting in and out a little bit, Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, wait.
Okay, then, I will wait on the memo as well, thank you.
Do you, do we need a motion to bring this back? I mean, it says proposed. Okay, can I get a motion to table till the next meeting?
Till March 8th, how about that?
Okay.
Okay, motion to table to March 8th.
Motion by Commissioner Loeb.
Madam Chair, could I also add, in the motion, that we'll put the, the memo in consent, just to make that part a little quicker, and if someone wants to pull it, they can pull it?
I, I personally would suggest you keep the item together.
Right, just motion to table it straight till March 8th.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Loeb.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item I two, Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the last meeting, February 8th, again, I brought up the topic of consolidating, or in fact, eliminating non-mandatory advisory boards. Previously stated, advisory boards raised under a different context, the January 25th meeting, based on comments made by, at the time, it appears the board was receptive. So what I've done is exactly as discussed concerning parks, I'll pass out a spreadsheet again, this spreadsheet is.
Has it changed?
It has not changed, Madam Chair, but I, just in case you did not print one out.
It is easier to read than on a computer.
Yes, than online. These are county boards funded for the sole purpose, advising this board on matters pertaining to parks, and this can be and should be central to the board, all of districts will be represented, and they can bring local issues to the central board. Nothing noticeably detrimental occurs if these boards are dissolved into one. So that's the intent of this, taking the four boards, Cocoa West, District Two, North, Brevard, and, and Parks and Rec South, and folding them into the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. CAO has done the necessary and diligent research regarding how consolidation can be achieved, the resolution that created these boards can be rescinded, and a resolution creating the new, quote, "Brevard County Parks and Rec Board" can be drafted. With the North Brevard Commission on Parks and Rec, for instance, this board can have the current resolution, which is 95-287, rescinded, but may not formally withdraw from participation until the end of the year. So that's not one that could be, happen immediately, it would take a little bit of time. Again, this is the work that the county attorney's office did, making sure that this was all legit. All the resolutions drafted dissolve the four boards and create the one. Central Brevard, one would come back to the commission for a result, sorry, for a vote. As a result, I would ask that the board approve a proposal that would carry out this desired action. There are some ways that this can be handled, it was mentioned previously, that a central meeting place, whether that be Vera, for convenience of participation. Of course, there could be virtual participation, or there could be a revolving meeting, so we could do quarterly meetings, one in each one of the four areas. I certainly want to make sure that participation is available. My goal is just to have costs reduced, so this could save a little more than $10,000 annually, as well as creating opportunities for staff to offer better goods and services to, to the community. So open for discussion, again, this has not changed since the last one, but I have a motion at the end, which we'll do just as discussed, eliminating the four, technically not eliminating the four till the end of the, the year, and then creating a new one, folding the others into it. So I'd like to open it up for, well, allow you to open up for discussion, and hear where the board stands on this one.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, Commissioner Tobias. I know that your, your end goal is to save and cut costs, so I have a proposal. The, the West Cocoa Committee and the North Brevard Committee, they, it's such a long district with a lot of parks, and the North Brevard Parks and Rec, they meet 12 times a year, by the way, we got nine, but they're there every month, and these guys come in serious, that what they do is they go check the parks, they take a little load off of staff time, they'll come in with action items, what needs to be done, what needs to be fixed. They're really doing a pretty good purpose, but I would propose that we cut them to four meetings, like Cocoa, therefore, we would cut the cost by two-thirds, and I, I think that would be a significant savings, is what you're looking for, and it might accomplish the same thing. I don't know about Merritt Island, I'm, I'm not sure that they could merge us into the North Brevard either, and try to get some things done, but I do know the North Brevard Parks and Recs Committee are really doing a good job up there, and I, I really believe they're taking a little bit of time off staff by going out and, and looking over these parks and doing some work. So would you be willing to maybe compromise, and we'll cut the 12 meetings a year from the North Brevard Parks, and they can just meet quarterly, so they'd be meeting four times a year instead of 12?
Commissioner Loeb?
I'll go ahead, I know that question was directed to Commissioner Tobias, but I'll throw out my two cents on it, yes. I, I think if we, if we cap, frankly, cap mine as well, because I think it's unfair just to cap yours, Commissioner Pritchett, I would cap all of them to meeting no more than four times a year, without getting board approval, I think that's a good move. I think it's going to make some significant cuts, at least in the one that you had mentioned, and maybe some smaller cuts elsewhere. I'm fine if we leave it at that, or alternatively, if the board wants to go ahead and consolidate them, I'm fine with that as well. Vera is fine, if that's where folks want to meet, or if they want to alternate between Vera and Kauanis, I'm fine with that, too. I like the sentiment that Commissioner Tobias is going for here, and I'm, I'm supportive whether we take a little step or a big step.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I did, I think I used MapQuest, I don't think anyone uses MapQuest anymore, but Cocoa West, if, if we chose Vera, would have 11-minute ride, Merritt Island would have a 24-minute ride, North Brevard, where they meet, they would have a 28-minute ride, and Parks and Rec South Area Advisory Board would have a 15-minute ride. So a couple times a year, I don't think that this is too much to ask of folks. Again, they would have the opportunity, and, and I wouldn't mind that if the Brevard County Parks Recreation Advisory Board, the one that was created, met every month, because I think we would see substantial savings in staff time, not having to drive to these locations. I didn't dig too deep into this, but it's a little weird how some of these have a cost that is four or five times the amount of others, I don't know what the rationale for this was, this was, you know, a, a cost of 2018. I mean, ultimately, the goal was not to reduce the number 69 to anything, it, it was to decrease the total amount of dollars on that. I don't think, and I guess we could, you know, I hadn't asked this question to, with your indulgence, staff to find out if, if we cut them from whatever, 12 meetings down to four, would we see a proportional savings, or would they ask three times as much at every meeting of staff to do work in order, I, I really don't know what the answer would, would be on that one.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I can help that a little bit, I do attend the North Brevard Parks and Rec one, because they're a very dedicated group, but they typically don't have staff to do action items, they'll come in with needs, so staff wouldn't have to necessarily go find out that a fence has fallen off, or, or there's, there's, there's holes in the playground, not that they don't, the park and rec don't do it as well, but they do meet 12 times a year, I know we got five in 2021, I think that was because of the COVID, but I, I do believe that, sir, that it would be more efficient to cut it down to, to quarterly, I think they would come with the same amount of action items with things that needed to be done, but I think the main cost on that is that they were meeting after our staff hours, and so Jeff Davis and a couple people have to be there extra, it's a pretty low-key meeting, and there's usually only two or three staff members that are there, so this is staff time, so I, I think that would greatly cut it. The other recommendation is maybe they could start meeting during the, the regular office hours, and that would cut that amount down to almost zero at that time, too, because it's, it is a county facility. So again, I, I think as far as, if North Brevard, and I, I don't, I know that you said the distance between them two, maybe, I don't know, I don't know where Commissioner Loeb is on joining the South with the Merritt Island Advisory Board, but.
Whatever you all want.
Okay, I just, I, I just, I just, as far as the North ones, I think if we cut these down from 16 meetings down to eight, I've just cut that cost in half for us as well by doing that, is moving forward right now, and giving that a shot and seeing how it goes.
Commissioner Smith, do you have input?
Not really. I understand the motivation to cut costs, and I agree with that. I personally don't have a dog in the hunt with any of this, I think that these boards could meet fewer times during the course of the year, and still do what we're asking them to do.
Okay, I'm going to just throw a wrench in it a little more.
Sure.
And I was going to suggest, and it would still not get to where, quite where you are, Commissioner Tobias, but I thought we had sort of at least touched on the idea of doing like a North and South. Now, I realize that the South may not have quite as many as the North, but at least that may, that would still give us the consolidation of those North boards, but, you know, not make people have to travel quite as far, because I, I want citizen participation, I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't have South County driving to North County, because the odds of them going to that meeting, if you did a rotation schedule, would probably be slim.
Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
Would you give me a couple weeks to bring back a proposal that incorporates a North and a South, with Commissioner Pritchett's suggestion of capping the number of meetings, and making them during, we'll, we'll check with staff, making sure that they're during business hours, so there's no additional costs, and bringing something back to the board at that time?
And perhaps like, the South County meetings could meet here, and that would save some time, because it's not a far ride, but maybe the North, the most North part of the county may not be quite as convenient, and we can meet somewhere North County.
Let me check it out.
Okay.
They're so far in demographics, even the personalities of their parks, so let me, let me, let me do some surveying and see what I get.
Okay, I, I will bring back a proposal, I'll leave the exact location of the North one a blank, and we'll wait for Commissioner Pritchett's suggestion as to where the best and most convenient location for a potential North one would be. And this would also save us from having to create a new, new one, a, a new one as well, so certainly that sounds like a very good compromise.
Commissioner Loeb?
Madam Chair, just from my perspective, and I've been pretty amenable, I think, as far as this item's concerned thus far, but I, I would just ask if it's something pertaining to District Two, that they either meet in D2 or in D4. I think D4, frankly, is a good default or fallback, simply because staff costs are lower if they're here, they can get back to work sooner, they don't have to take as long off work, it is central, so I, I got to say, if they're meeting four times a year potentially, they can drive to Vera. I, I don't think that's unreasonable, so I, you know, if, if Commissioner Pritchett can live with her folks driving to Vera, I can live with mine driving to Vera.
Yeah, I go all the way to Scottsmore, I mean, you're, you're talking a long drive to Vera.
Well, maybe, maybe we leave, in that case, maybe we leave Commissioner Pritchett's North Brevard one up there, and we.
I've got two North Brevard ones, kind of.
That's right.
Yeah, so I think if Commissioner Tobias comes back with that, and I get a little bit of time to survey, and see if, if, how, how difficult it's going to be to get all them together.
Okay.
So.
Okay, well, I, I think worst case, just to, again, reiterate where I'm at, I, I think one of the obvious things is cut it to four times a year, period.
I think that's going to be a significant savings.
Yeah, I, I'm good with that, and if I, if I oppose something else, I certainly will still be good with that at least, but we'll see. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Tobias. All right, item I three.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, as discussed, the libraries, again, there's been one small change on this one. Commissioner Pritchett District, the, in Commissioner Pritchett's district, Tysseville Public Library Advisory Board is a little unique, as it was created out of state statute, so that was an error on, on, on my part, that one should have been included in the mandatory one, so I'm going to pass out a spreadsheet here that has that revision. It, it won't change most of the recommendations, however. Okay, there are currently 14 library boards within Brevard County, seven which are county-run, and then, and that includes a Brevard County Library System Advisory Board. It's proposed that the board dissolve the six smaller boards into one, already existing, the Brevard County Library System Advisory Board, which could also meet centrally for convenience purposes. This would be initiated by a motion directing staff to draft documents rescinding the resolution establishing these other county boards, the document would come back to the board for a formal vote, of course. The other seven of the 14 library boards are city advisory boards, but the county sends staff, and I still don't really have a great reason as to why, and expending funds. Two of the city boards, City of Melbourne and Melbourne Beach, also have county resolutions that would have to be rescinded, so a motion would need to be, to approve, to direct staff to draft documents to rescind these as well. All of the four remaining city boards, it was determined by the CAO's office, after extensive research, that nothing is legally binding the county to actually participate, therefore, we can just stop sending staff, and thus expending funds on these four. Those are the City of Cape Canaveral, City of Cocoa Beach, City of Palm Bay, and City of Satellite Beach. Again. Again, they can continue, we just would stop sending staff. The Titusville Public Library, this is the revision made, although City Board is one that we will not be seeking to withdraw from, after a review, again, Special Act of the Florence Legislature created this. So wanted to talk about some of these city boards, and you have that there. Again, it makes logical sense for us to withdraw from some of these. An example, we're not seeing where Melbourne Board meets at all, on top of the number eight through 13. We don't even know who sits on the board. We don't know whether or not there are vacancies, or anything of that nature. Again, these boards can continue, however, this would not require staff to attend these meetings. This is not a great savings, but at least it takes some boards off the table. These range anywhere from $2,100, it looks like, for the City of Palm Bay Advisory Board, to as little as, again, $192 for the Melbourne Beach Public Library Advisor Board, Advisory Boards. As for the county board, it is the sole purpose to advise this board. Per the library director, they do not deal with any operations, and any information they advise on becomes centralized anyhow. So sending county staff time and resources on multiple county boards, they can be streamlined, and same purpose as a singular board, is far more efficient to continue that way. Nothing negative will happen, or at least we're aware of, if these boards are actually dissolved. So, again, the motions will be to pull out of eight through 13, and then combine the ones at the top. I'll go over them in a little bit more detail, should anyone have any questions before I make the motion, but want to hear if there are any suggestions, or the board would like to move forward with the consolidation of some of these boards, as well as pulling out from some of these city boards. Again, we're not dissolving them, we're just deciding not to send staff, and letting the cities deal with the administration of these.
Commissioner Loebur?
A couple things. First is to consolidating these, whatever we choose to consolidate, if anything, I would suggest they either meet here in Vieira, or, given that we're talking about library staff at the Central Reference Library, I think either of those would make sense. Putting it elsewhere really just doesn't make sense from a staff perspective. I'd rather keep them off the road, and by extension, have them doing what we're paying them to do. I do have questions as to eight through 13, though, in terms of what staff believes is being accomplished by having participation by county employees, because frankly, looking at number nine, which is in my district, full disclosure, in Cocoa Beach, the cost was about 450 bucks, but they met nine times, and it seems like it's something that, given the number of meetings, it is a relatively low cost. Maybe, maybe if it's something where it's worthwhile, we have them continue to go, maybe we have them go to the meetings, but less frequently. But I really don't know to what degree they've been participating in those, not columns, but rows, eight through 13. So I would just ask staff if they could kind of give us a general idea as to what, what our involvement has been in with the individual cities.
So staff go to these city board meetings, and they do share information about the library, things that are happening at the library, and we do get feedback from the various cities regarding ideas they might have, or ways that they would like to see things change, or programs that they are interested in.
Thanks. And Commissioner Tobias, if you want, I'm all for consolidating two through seven, again, provided they meet either here in Vieira or at the Reference Library. But as to eight through 13, given that the cost is relatively low in the scheme of things, if citizens really do have the ability to essentially petition their government for redress, or lobby us to do different things in an area that's convenient for them, I'm not really comfortable getting rid of eight through 13, because I think that, that makes government more accessible for folks. Yes, there's a cost, but I think the cost is relatively low in the scheme of things.
Thank you, Madam Chair. These are, we're not, we're not infringing on anyone's right to redress government. These are city libraries, they're funded through other revenue sources generally, and those folks certainly have the ability to speak with their local elected officials. They certainly have the ability to speak with us as well. This would just stop, quite frankly, wasting staff's time to go to facilities that we have absolutely no authority to impact one way or another. Again, we don't even know the number of vacancies, or who sits on those boards. So we're not dealing away, we're not closing, no, we're not ending, we are just saying that the City of Palm Bay, or the City of Melbourne, or the City of Cocoa Beach is, are more than willing, more than willing to continue that, and we strongly encourage that, but it won't be at county, at county expense. And if they decide that they want to send a resolution to us, or a letter to us at every meeting, I'm sure staff will be more than willing to take those suggestions, but having to send staff all over the place, I mean, in 2021, you're looking at 17, 18, 25, 24 meetings here, and we've got the City of Melbourne Beach that they didn't even meet. So I think those are the lowest hanging fruit. I certainly don't want to look a gift horse, gift horse in the mouth, because I strongly would support getting rid of two through seven, or consolidating them into one, the one that is currently there, but I think it's a lot easier to, to, quite frankly, stop participation, county participation, in eight through 13. But certainly want to hear where the board is, and if, if that's the consent of the board, I would be very happy. That would be a savings of $4,000, $4,000, $5,000, it looks like, a year, and cutting the boards down by five or six.
Commissioner Loebur?
Commissioner Tobias, I hear where you're coming from, and I understand you do have a valid point, but I would just suggest that the 24 meetings, it sounds like a lot, and in a sense, it is, it is a lot, but it's also 24 meetings to allow constituents of ours to reach not only their city, but their county as well. Nothing obligates me to go to commission meetings or council meetings in my own district, but I still go to a number of them. I don't go to every single one, certainly not for every city, but I've been to a number of them for the municipalities within my district, and I don't feel an obligation to go, I just think it's better for my constituents, who are able to address their, their city-elected officials, than potentially either for them to address, or if the city has questions, to have me physically available to at least give whatever input I have. And I don't know that it's wasteful to be doing that on my part, or on staff's part, in the case of these library boards. Frankly, I'm not aware that we've ever compelled staff to go there, and if they thought it was a waste of their time, they simply wouldn't go. I'm not looking to compel them to continue going. If they believe that there's a benefit to go, I just don't want to preclude them from doing that. So I don't know what the will of the rest of the board is, but I feel pretty strongly as to eight through 13, in terms of wanting to continue the participation.
Commissioner Pritchett?
With eight through 13, wouldn't it be possible for them to still be meeting under their, their cities? Just an idea, if they did that, they could still have the meetings. And then, you know, even with the ones up top, what I'm thinking, because we have 31 people that serve on the purple section that you gave us, and that'd be a lot to hold one big public meeting. Maybe we, we could take this off of being meetings with, with county staff, they can still meet, get together, have conversations, and then we could have one big board meeting, they would send a representative, maybe quarterly, out of, out of both of these groups. So we'd have Group Purple and Group Green up at the county, however we did that, and there could be one consolidated meeting, where they could bring ideas for their other libraries. I'm just thinking, like, with the MEMS Scottsmore, I've been to that one a couple times, they're aggressive with figuring out their children's programs. They get, they get down in the weeds of what they want to do upcoming months, months and through the time period. So I, I think they're getting together and having conversations is very profitable, but I'm thinking if we take all these, and let them send a representative from each group, one or two, and then we could have one consolidated meeting under the county, under the Sunshine criteria at that time, we could cut, we could cut these meetings way back and consolidate them. But Commissioner Loebur, that's something to consider, they, these boards can still meet under the city if they want it to, and make their decisions, then we could have one big county meeting, where they send representatives to do the, the overall part of those, those libraries, just a thought.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And your, your compromise was so good on the first one, I don't see why it couldn't be used on this one as well. Creating one that met in the North, and creating one that met in the South, maybe having a subcommittee of all of the city libraries that fit underneath the Brevard County Library System Advisory Board, the same way the TDC has subcommittees that meet. But I would be more than willing to incorporate those suggestions into a, a new plan by next commission meeting, that would have some geographic participation of not only these cities, but, but, but the county ones as well. I, I think that, you know, that certainly gets us closer to the goal of having, or the goal that I stated, having less, less boards, but more importantly, less money expended, while giving everyone the opportunity to participate in the furtherance of, of these public libraries.
Commissioner Loebur?
My, my concern is essentially the same as I had with the prior item, as far as the locations. If you split the county in two, I have folks all the way from the edge of Cape Canaveral, all the way down to Rockledge, where I live, and if we say, okay, the, the North and the South are the two areas, if you have MEMS in Valkyria, they're driving a heck of a distance for a volunteer board. So I would just ask, if you want to do something like that, you keep something for the central area, either in Vieira, or in this case, with, since it's a library issue, over at the Central Reference Library, I think either of those are far closer, and will, in all likelihood, allow for folks to continue to participate, who probably aren't going to be inclined to drive to either MEMS, or down to Malabar.
I don't have any cards on this, Commissioner Tobias?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to table this until our next meeting, where I, where I will, yeah, I think, March 8th, until where I will incorporate many of the suggestions, and bring back a, a plan that better, that better compromises the goals stated.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, before we move on to the next item, I've been asked if we could take a quick five, seven-minute break, so we'll break five to seven minutes. Thank you. Thank you. And we'll move on to item one, or J1, and I have a bunch of cards, so we're going to kind of introduce the item. And if commission is agreeable, we'll listen to the public comment cards first, and then we'll bring it back to the board. Ms. Barker?
Okay, thank you. This is adoption of the annual update for the Save Our Indian River Lagoon project plan as recommended by six out of seven of the voting members on the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Citizen Oversight Committee. In terms of fiscal impact with what's going on in our economy, we re-projected the 10-year revenues for the half-cent sales tax and increased the fiscal impact by $53 million. Six million of that is dollars that were already collected in 2021 above and beyond what was previously projected. The remaining 47 million is all projections for the future. And so what the committee recommended that's in your packet was to take that 6 million that is already collected and allocate that to new projects. So approximately 4.2 million of that 6 is going to more wastewater projects, either septic to sewer or wastewater treatment plant upgrades. 1 million is going to public education engagement and outreach. This is a variation on the previous contract for oyster gardening that the board two years ago had asked the committee to consider incorporating into the lagoon plan. It was previously paid for out of the stormwater fees. And so this would take that program and extend it out for the five-year remaining life of the half-cent sales tax. It would also expand that program from not just oysters, but also whatever restoration projects are going on in the lagoon that volunteers could be engaged in, whether that be clams or living shorelines or seagrass, mangroves, any of those restoration-type projects. There's another 300,000 going towards stormwater treatments, approximately 300,000 going towards vegetation harvesting, 300,000 going for environmental dredging of muck, and the remaining, that 47 million that's based on future inflation, is all put into contingency because we know that as materials cost more, we collect more, construction costs will also go up. And so the idea is to have those reserves ready to be able to deliver the projects that are in the plan. The requested action includes adoption of the plan, if that's the will of the board, associated budget change requests, continued signature authority for the chair or authorized representative to enter contracts to implement those projects, continued authority for me as the director to execute up to two no-cost time extensions, up to six months each, as previously authorized by the board, permission to advertise formal solicitation of bids and proposals to get these projects implemented, and authorization to submit grant applications to leverage the half-cent sales tax dollars with whatever grant opportunities are out there for these sorts of projects. I would just like to highlight one other thing from the agenda summary, which is there were a lot of updates in this 2022 plan, and we updated the current status of seagrass losses and seagrass restoration efforts in the lagoon, including a Resilient Florida grant, which has been secured by the county, which will allow us to plant one and a half acres of seagrass to test different planting methods and planting densities to find the most economical and effective approach for large-scale restoration in the lagoon, and development of a seagrass restoration toolkit for all of the agencies and stakeholders, nonprofit groups that are out there looking to plant seagrass in the lagoon to help start that restoration process. That restoration is limited by where in the lagoon the water quality is sufficient to be able to actually support seagrasses. So with that, I just want to quickly jump to slides. So we have completed 56 projects. The stars on the map show you the location of those projects distributed from MEMS to Miko, mainland beaches, Merritt Island, in the Indian River, and the Banana River Lagoon. There are also 63 individual septic lateral repairs that have been funded to private homeowners, 34 septic-to-sewer connections for people that lived nearby sewer lines and didn't have to wait for a sewer extension project, and 53 septic upgrades for people to replace their old conventional septic with a new advanced septic system. Additionally, there are 24 more projects that are contracted for construction, with construction underway, and 39 more projects that are contracted and in design, and there are 15 more projects that the contracts are in development right now. So in terms of progress, we have reduced the annual loading of nitrogen to the lagoon by nearly 100,000 pounds per year. This graph was provided by St. John's River Water Management District. Each of the pies is for a different segment of the lagoon, from left to right, the mosquito lagoon, the Banana River Lagoon, the Northern Indian River Lagoon, which is from the northern limits of the Indian River down to the 192 Causeway in Melbourne, and then the Central Indian River Lagoon is from the 192 Causeway south through Indian River County. And so the scale on these pie charts is how much do we need to reduce, the top row is nitrogen, the bottom row is phosphorus, how much do we need to reduce each of those nutrients to hit the load reduction targets for seagrass to recover? And so the green portion of those pie charts shows you how much of that load reduction we have achieved so far. So we are making progress, but obviously, we still have a long way to go. We are halfway through this half-cent sales tax, and we still need years to implement the projects and programs that are proposed in the plan. And so what this means for seagrass is that we don't have the water quality that these standards have predicted we will need for seagrass to be able to recover and survive. These standards were developed by the Water Management District. They were reviewed and adopted by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and then reviewed and approved by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. And so we are on our way, but to work on seagrass restoration, we have to look for specific areas of the lagoon which are cleaner than others, where we have clearer water that lasts longer, long enough for seagrass to see sunlight and grow long enough to store enough energy in the rhizomes that it can suffer through the bloom season and then bounce back the following year. And so we are going through an effort currently to identify what areas of the lagoon are cleanest and shallowest and most likely to be able to support seagrass the soonest. And those are the areas that we would work to, where we would attempt our pilot project and point other people to those areas as well for their restoration work. In this 2022 proposed plan, there are 31 project additions. I talked about the bottom of the list, the oyster gardening program, which is revamped to include whatever sort of public participation in restoration might be going on at the time over the next five years. But there's also 13 septic-to-sewer conversion projects, eight stormwater projects, four vegetation harvesting projects, a couple oyster bars, one wastewater treatment plant upgrade, one small environmental dredging project in Melbourne, and one planted shoreline project. That brings the total of all projects in the plan to 337. And these pie charts are part of your board packet. They show what the distribution of funding was by project type in the original 2016 plan versus what it is in this proposed 2022 plan. And so you see on the left-hand pie chart, the large gray area, that was 66% going towards muck removal, addressing the legacy load in the lagoon. And several years back, the board asked the committee to consider reducing the amount of funding spent on that, to put more into addressing the sources of pollution, especially human sewage. And so all of those yellow and orange wedges of the pie on the right-hand side, those are all different types of wastewater-related projects, with the largest piece, the yellow, being septic-to-sewer conversions. So that's my part of the presentation. I also have the consultant, Tetra Tech, here, who developed the original plan and has been working with, collecting the recommendations of the committee throughout the year and then implementing that into the recommended plan updates. Marcy Frick is a senior water resources engineer in Tetra Tech's Water Resources Group. She has 19 years of experience. She spent most of her career working on restoration plans throughout the state of Florida, including implementation of the Comprehensive Everglades Restoration Plan. She also, as a contractor for the state of Florida, developed their basin management action plans for many locations around the state of Florida, including the basin management action plans for the North Indian River Lagoon, the Central Indian River Lagoon, and the Banana River Lagoon. And so she was very familiar with our issues, our water quality challenges, the types of projects that were feasible here, what sort of credit the agencies would be willing to grant us for these sorts of projects. And all of the stakeholders who had been working with the state, developing those basin management plans, was familiar with her and her work, which made development of that initial plan in 2016, when we had six weeks to produce a plan, made it possible for that to happen in the timeframe that we had. She's also worked on the Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Program, the latest rendition of the Comprehensive Conservation and Management Plan. She's developed Martin County's Water Quality Needs Assessment, St. Lucie County's Water Quality Assessment, and Indian River County's Lagoon Management Plan. And so you have her slideshow in your packet. It goes through all of the changes in the 2022 plan update. She's available to either go through that slideshow or answer any questions that you might have.
What's the board's desire? Do they have any questions?
Just comment after, when it's available.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to our comment cards for now. I'm sure we may have questions later. Mr. John Windsor, and after John, it'll be Rick Heffelfinger. Should say Dr. Windsor.
John Windsor, Melbourne, Florida. Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you for your ongoing commitment to Indian River Lagoon restoration. I'm sticking to my script today. Forty years ago, I started studying Indian River Lagoon issues. I recommend the adoption of the 2022 Soral Project Plan Update. I'm one of 14 Soral COC members whose expertise includes science, finance, tourism, education, real estate, technology, and lagoon advocacy. Over the last year, the COC has continued to meet nearly monthly. Most COC members continue to be present at all meetings. We heard progress reports and results from funded projects. Natural Resources Management staff arranged presentations from technical experts on many topics important to COC members and the public. During the last year, some of the topics addressed include low-impact development, septic upgrades, mechanical harvesting of aquatic vegetation, resiliency opportunities, human fish health investigations, climate-ready estuaries, drift macroalgae in the lagoon, floating wetlands for stormwater treatment, our annual audit report, wastewater treatment asset management, package plant-to-sewer conversions, shovel-ready seagrass restoration, manatee habitat enhancement, aeration of canals along the lagoon, sand capping of muck deposits, and improving circulation in the Indian River Lagoon. At each meeting, comment was solicited for any project plan changes that COC voted on, and an open public comment period was near the end of each meeting. Some comments were outside the scope of the COC, and I think you guys are familiar with that kind of thing. On more than one occasion, individual COC members reached out to assist the citizen after the meeting. Our meetings have been well organized and productive, primarily due to the Natural Resources Management staff. Staff has always been available to answer my questions or provide me data in a very timely manner. I want to thank them publicly for their outstanding work. After considering new projects this year, the plan before you has been carefully reviewed and recommended by the Soral COC. I support the adoption of the Soral Project Plan. Thank you once again for your continued support of Indian River Lagoon restoration.
Thank you. Rick? And after Rick, Vinnie Taranto?
Rick Heffelfinger, 2000 Juniper Drive, Cocoa, Florida 32926. I'm here to talk about this item, not because I know anything about the Indian River Lagoon Restoration Program. I assume you guys are all doing a wonderful job. Based on the previous comments, I'd say you're looking at a lot of different stuff, a lot of projects. My concern is, the issue, I don't know if you read the paper, but there's been some opinion pieces that there's some issues about people raising questions and getting shut down, and then when they try to find information through public record requests, they come up with a huge bill for hours to get information that sounds, I don't have all the specifics, but I've experienced the same thing. I've made public records requests, and I've been told that documents that were passed to you guys during a meeting didn't exist, didn't get copies, refunded some of my money. So I don't know how you do public records. I thought it all went through the attorney, but there's got, there's something wrong because it's so hard to get information. And to have somebody tell you that, hey, your questions are not valid, or you don't get that information, that sounds wrong. I don't know what, you know, it sounds like it was seagrass, and we talked a lot about, by the way, is that, is that up on the public record thing for, under the item, that presentation?
I know it's a part.
Does it get linked to the, what do they call it? The?
It's a part of the video. That particular pie chart is in the agenda summary, but the other slides were not in the agenda, well, one of them was, two of them are, were not a part of the agenda package.
I just looked on the Telestar or whatever, and I didn't see that PowerPoint link. Is that something you usually do or don't do?
This was information that came up and seemed timely after I submitted the agenda packet two weeks ago, but I'm happy to provide that information to you.
Yeah. Well, that, again, that's, I guess that goes toward a little bit of transparency, too. I mean, if you don't attend all these meetings and watch all the videos, and then you do have questions and somebody shuts you down, I don't know what you do. You have to do a public records request. And I've had trouble with them, too. So I think you guys need to, $1,000 for 12 hours, quote, I think I heard this lady, she wrote her opinion part, you're quoting her at rates for a director's salary for, how hard is it to pull email? You go into your email and you say, "Search for seagrass," and you dump it out. Maybe I misunderstood, it was, maybe it was more than an email request, but that seems insane. That looks like you're throwing a financial block at somebody getting information. And if she couldn't get the information the other way, she had no choice but to do that. And then you're going to vote on it tonight, right? She didn't get her information. She wasn't able to make a case, I guess, that she thinks there's something dealing with the seagrass that's not right. So you're going to vote, you're going to prove it, and then try to change it later, you're shutting her down. And I think that's, that's something you guys need to look at, what that process is, how much money does it really cost? You know, staff, but do you need a supervisor to pull records? That seems insane. Thank you.
Commissioner Pichet?
Yeah, I just want to mention this. Commissioner Zonka, you brought this up at the workshop, that you thought that some of our public records requests are getting outlandish. I don't know, I think we had made some changes a while ago. Maybe we need to go back and look at it again as far as cost and staff time. And it's our office, when we request it, things, if we have them in email, we just, we just send them out. So that'd be, it'd be something that we probably should consider and look at. Thank you, sir, for bringing that up. Another thing, though, a lot of times what we read isn't always all the things going on. And so, you know, you almost have to show up sometimes to get all this information so you can make good decisions. That's the goal of this board, is to get all the information we can so that we're having good decisions moving forward. So I just wanted to mention that. I wouldn't mind relooking at public records cost, county manager, if it's something that we can do as far as making the process simpler. It is the goal to get information out to the community, and we don't want to stop that.
Ms. Barker, would you mind addressing, you know, there was an accusation made in an opinion piece. Would you mind addressing where that $1,000 cost came from?
That particular request was for every email from me that contained the word, or to or from me that contained the word "seagrass." And the county attorney did pull those records. There were 7,022 pages, and per the county's policy on public records requests, it says, "All emails shall be reviewed by the records custodian and the appropriate county staff member to ensure no exempt and/or confidential information is contained therein." And so the time that was quoted was the time for me to review 7,022 pages to ensure that no exempt or confidential information was contained therein.
And the reason why you had to review them is because you were either part of the email or you're the originator?
They were my emails.
It wasn't your choice, correct?
Correct.
And it was per policy?
Correct.
Because I ask the same question, obviously, when someone makes such an outlandish accusation. I definitely want, want those questions answered. Commissioner Loebur?
A couple of thoughts. Is that on? Yeah. A couple of thoughts with respect to this. I don't know that there's a very diplomatic way to phrase this, so I'm just going to say it. From my impression, there is a concern that I have. I would not have been concerned were the only item that was brought to my attention solely the invoice for the public records. But it was what preceded that that caused me to consider that there may be more of an issue going on there than might otherwise be the case. And what I'm referring to in particular is, one of the folks that requested records from Natural Resources at first was told that the records either were or may have been covered by Sunshine Law, and Sunshine Law precluded the release to those individuals who serve on the Citizens Oversight Committee. I'm not the county attorney, but I know enough when it comes to public record law to know that that's absolute nonsense. I had the person reach out to me to see if I would intercede on their behalf to avoid them having to sue the county in order to get the records. I sent Abby an email at that point in time and said, "Abby, I don't know," and I'm paraphrasing here, "I don't know why she was told this, but I don't believe that's the case at all. I think she's entitled to the records. There's no basis in Sunshine to deny her the records. I hope you agree." And I copied the individual who reached out to me on that. Abby thankfully shared the same opinion that I had, that she was entitled to the records, and Sunshine was essentially, and I'm paraphrasing this part here, I'm saying Sunshine was essentially red herring there. That in and of itself means one of two things. Either there's a lack of knowledge when it comes to what Sunshine Law precludes on the part of at least one department director, or alternatively, which is worse, information's intentionally being kept from being disseminated to folks who are entitled to it. I can't make a judgment call objectively on that. I have my subjective opinion, and it is what it is. What I'll tell you is to have that, where information's essentially held at the gates as an objective statement unreasonably or unlawfully, to then have a $1,000 quote generated, it causes me concern. And Virginia just mentioned, and I'm going to look at the wording, because I was jotting it down as she was speaking, "out of the policy to have the appropriate county staff member ensure there's no exempt or confidential information contained therein." If she doesn't understand that Sunshine's a non-issue, there's already, in my mind, a lack of foundation to say that she's the appropriate person to determine whether or not that information is confidential or exempt, because she clearly has had issues with respect to understanding what needs to be kept versus what needs to be produced. I can tell you, I've gotten a slew of public records requests in my office. Some of them Kika handles, some of them I handle, it depends. But my general policy, it's not a general policy, my policy, period, is the lowest compensated employee who's capable of fulfilling the public records request is the one that handles it. If it is something where there is a basis to believe that there's confidential or exempt information, I've had things that have requested communications with law enforcement officers, and I can tell you that some of the information contained therein is absolutely exempt from disclosure. It's not that I don't want to produce it, I'm legally prohibited from producing it. And Kika, I love her, she's been in my office for three years, she's great, I hope she doesn't go anywhere. But I don't know that she knows the exemptions as well as I do, and I don't know that she knows the content as well as I do, to be able to go through without spending an inordinate amount of time to determine what should or shouldn't be produced. And I'm not a conspiracy theorist. It may very well be that there's some reason that I'm not aware of why Virginia is the only county employee in that department who's able to fulfill the request. But I don't know what that would, why that would be the case. I don't know why there isn't someone who's paid 15 bucks an hour, 20 bucks an hour, who couldn't go through the same information. If there's a reason to think that every single one of those emails contained exempt, or a number of them contained exempt and confidential information, okay, I mean, that may be a legitimate thing, but I've just not seen it. And I think it smacks when you consider the Sunshine refusal at first. It smacks of there being at least an argument to be made that it looks bad, and that it looks like it's trying to be kept. I'm not saying that's the case, but I'm saying the image and the way that it appears doesn't look good.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I just want to make a couple notes on that. Just, in the beginning, Commissioner Loebur, I remember when we first got on here, something happened, and all of your personal information got out. And so I think at that time, we started making some adjustments to make sure everything got redacted that would harm anybody else, so we wouldn't have any unforeseen consequences. And then, whenever I get public records requests, I typically get it from the clerk's office or a member of county. And if I get any, I usually send it to them, just let them handle it, they have access to everything I have, all my computers, everything. So everything's easily to be obtained. So really, the appropriate thing, if someone wants this, maybe to get ahold of the clerk or somebody, or get sent to that department, so the correct department can do it, because I know we all get a little bit busy on trying to accomplish things. But some of these things are actually asking for almost a report, which takes some time to compile. So I like Commissioner Zonka's idea, the last one, you know, for us to get some information for them, but then we have the responsibility of making sure that things are redacted, because then we're liable if we hand out things and we haven't done the appropriate measures. So it's really almost always safer to send it through county, through those departments that have the ability to do that, and the responsibility in making sure nobody gets harmed with it. Again, I've sat with us long enough and with the staff, and none of us have tried to withhold information from the community. It's, what we're about is communication. So I understand some people are frustrated, but I think they're frustrated because typically communication's been very poor in a lot of areas. And I don't necessarily think it's staff, I just think everybody's trying to work a project, and that's part of the issue. So I just wanted to mention that, sir. I don't believe for a minute Ms. Virginia doesn't get information out in a timely manner. She has so much to manage. She has got one of the various, very high-dollar responsibilities in our county as far as the lagoon. It's high dollar. And so this, the COC Board and everybody that comes together to make recommendations, and I watch the board meetings, I have no life, but they're interesting, here are all the minds that come together, and all the personalities, and the way they work together. So I know this is a hot topic, I know people don't agree upon the outcome, and that's where the problem comes in. Because when you don't get what you want done, I think a way to kind of, to take everybody down a rabbit trail so that you get off focus of what we're trying to accomplish is what happens many times, it's human nature. So again, I just want to mention this, because I don't know if it'll come up again, but at our meeting we had for budget, I thought it was very important that all of us had that information, because four of us were not privy to information requests and things going around. Was it wrong? Not necessarily, but I think to make good decisions up here, we vote on this. We have to have as much data stuck in our heads as we can get, and go after as much information as we can. And so it's just, and if I realize we're not getting information, we have to have it. It's very important to have it. And I watched the COC meeting, and Ms. Laurley, thank you for bringing up our project, we're getting ready to do up there to help with the seagrass. But I didn't hear any of the COC Board actually have a whole lot of conflict with what was being presented, and I listened for it. I wanted to go back and listen for it. I read Ms. Hamberlin's newspaper articles, I wanted to see what the conflict was, because I didn't hear that before I went back, and I just didn't hear it, and maybe you can come up later, maybe there's a different time that you mentioned that, I didn't hear it. But from all the data I have been given so far and everything I've been going after, I haven't heard anything in conflict to what we're bringing. And this board will have a conversation here in a minute, and we'll see what's coming up. We're under Sunshine, we can't communicate, so I don't know what's in their heads right now. So at public meetings, we have to talk about these things so that we know what's going on. So that's why we bring up things out there that we're trying to figure out and work through. But Ms. Barker, your integrity is not in question with me, the things you do are not in question. I am amazed at what you get done. I actually went through one of these emails that somebody asked you about, and if, with your indulgence, I want to give you guys these time periods. She was given a question by constituent at 9:32 in the morning, she gave an answer at 12:28, she had another one come in at 1:41, she gave another answer at 2:51, and then she followed up again that same night at 6:43 in the evening. And then the next email, the question that came in wasn't to February 8th. I haven't seen her trying to block information on these. And I went through the emails, and I just tried to research it and find out what's going on. I don't like moving off emotions or everybody's opinions, I try to gather as much information as I can. So ma'am, everything I found, I haven't seen that happening, and I'm just telling you that, Commissioner Loebur, because I put a little extra work into the spreadsheets. But I just want to state that, because that's come up, and I just want to, for the record, with all that's in my heart with what I'm trying to find, I haven't found anything unappropriate as far as trying to withhold information for constituents. Some of them might take more longer to get together, but I recommend we send it to the county departments to handle these and let them get the information out as quickly as possible.
Thank you. I didn't, I try not to interrupt public comments with a lot of those comments, but Commissioner Loebur, you were the one that increased those public records rates, because you were getting just inundated, remember? Back when you brought it to the board and you?
How did I do that, you know, latterly?
What I'm saying is, you brought that to the board to talk about, you know, because you were getting public records abused at that point, I mean, with the amount of requests. So I mean, I know some of your public records costs have been kind of high as well, and I'm not questioning as far as, you know, who has higher, but I believe if I have 12,000 emails to go through, not only am I going to want to make sure that whoever's requesting it gets the correct information, I'm going to want to make sure there is nothing private that just inadvertently gets mentioned, because of that release we had in the beginning, that issue we had with IT in the beginning. So I mean, I, again, for me, I want to see what's going out. Half the time, we don't even know when public records requests are being made till after the fact, but because of that release of, I mean, it was like a FAFSA banking information, personal computer stuff, there was an issue, a big issue for all of us, even some on our staff. So I know I would want to see something to that magnitude. And obviously, for good reason, because things get completely blown out of proportion, people take opportunities, and they make accusations, and it makes for good print, but it's not the whole truth and barely part of the truth. And that's what I take issue with. So we'll address it later, I'm sure, but?
I really would like to respond to that a little bit.
Okay.
So as far as the business with the public records requests in my office, the bottom line is the request that released exempt, statutorily exempt information pertaining to me. We never had the opportunity to have anyone in my office review it. It was sent without us even knowing that the request had come in.
Right.
Had I had Kika or Rocket, who have hourly wages that are far less than mine, have the ability to review it, that would have been fine, they could have reviewed it. But what we're talking about here is that not only did the department have the opportunity to review it, it went to the highest-paid staff member in the department. So it's totally not an apples-to-apples to say that the reason that led to the change in the public record structure here is somehow analogous to this.
What I'm saying is, the request was of her records, though. I mean, so, I mean, she understandably would get that request. And I know I've seen some of your public records requests cost before, and they were directly related to what your wage was. So I mean, I'm just saying, I would be careful of not, of holding everyone to the same standard that you apply, because I don't think you let your staff go through your stuff without charging your rent.
I absolutely do.
Maybe now, but that's not what it was.
I have, if you can find one instance in which you have an issue, bring it up and set an agenda item, and we'll go over it.
Okay.
Please, because I think that's absolutely fallacious.
Oh, well, we'll have them pull, we'll have Nadia pull those calls.
That's fine. It's great to make an accusation with no specifics, so that there is nothing to rebut, but that's nonsense.
All right, we'll bring it to the next meeting.
Okay.
Vinnie Toronto? And after Vinnie, Sandra Sullivan?
Hi.
Hey, ma'am, Chair and Commissioners. Vinnie Toronto, 313 10th Terrace, in Atlantic Florida. And Commissioner Tobia, I use MapQuest, too, so that makes that two of us. First off, as chairman, one of my tasks of the Citizen Oversight Committee is to present the plan to y'all for your consideration. And so we've done that, I wanted to make myself available for any questions. But due to the previous comment, I just have to say that unequivocally, there was nobody shut down at the last meeting. And I would request everybody take a look at it if they think somebody was shut down. As chairman, my task is to make sure that we have an orderly meeting, and I take it personal to make sure that everybody on that committee feels that they've been heard. And so please look back at the meeting, look, it's online. Unequivocally, nobody was shut down. So thank you very much, and if you have any questions, I'll make myself available. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Sullivan? And after Sandra Sullivan, Stell Bailey?
You can just give them to me, so it's faster.
Good morning, Sandra Sullivan. So I just want to say that I have records which are not fulfilled on this issue, as it still stands right now. I reviewed the video from the budget meeting during the break, and did confirm that following D1's comments, the context of the actua items, which I never used in my emails, was referred to as records requests, and a conversation ensued. So I would still like that to be looked at. Pertaining to the last oversight meeting, there were three committee members who brought up concerns that the purpose of that Citizen Oversight Committee is to advise the county and to provide oversight. And so three issues were brought up. One brought up pesticides that got redirected by Tetra Tech and by the director. The second comment was brought up about pesticides in the impoundment area, which is on the plan. And there was, that then went on to another comment about biocides, copper being a biocide. Of that, at no time did the director say to the concerns brought up by the COC, "Do you want to see a change in plan?" There's a process to modifying these. So I just want to say, the issue I have with the plan and why I'm asking you not to approve it today, is that FDEP knew as of 2011 that more than nutrients loading was causing the seagrass to die off. Last year, Marine Resource Council data sent to you found that even in areas of good nutrient levels, the seagrass was still dying, suggesting another factor. The plan has not been adjusted beyond nutrient loading in Section 3. This here is the number of 177 dead manatees in Brevard as of 11 February '22. 70% of those manatees are here in Brevard County. When you see massive die-off of species in the lagoon that rely on seagrass, it's telling you other species as well in the lagoon are dying. This is more species in this lagoon than any other lagoon in North America. It's very important to protect. So I would say we've lost about 80% of seagrass in the lagoon. The lagoon plan is not working, that is evident right now. So we need to reassess what could be causing, and look at the scientific literature. This issue is not limited to Brevard, it is across the world, in fact. And there's a lot of research in other areas, as copper is mixed with herbicides, and there's a lot of runoff of copper to the lagoon, as well as other contaminants that can cause the decline of seagrass. Thank you.
Stell Bailey? And after Stell, Lou Kotnick?
Good morning. Stell Bailey with Fight for Zero. I'm the executive director. I'm also the National PFOS Contamination Coalition Leader. I'm also a community liaison for the Academy of Sciences. I wanted to come up here and talk about this plan because Fight for Zero has been doing testing across the county on PFOS. We just had our University of Florida presentation last week. And a lot of the people have been readily available to answer our questions on this plan. I am probably one of the half-sent tag's biggest critics, but at the same time, I have been boots on the ground and I have been seeing the manatees. I have been seeing the water quality decline. I know that we need this money. I know that we need this project implemented and we need to continue going down the scientifically proven path of this plan. And so you have amazing organizations like Orca that are doing the studies. Our group doing the studies. We do not need to waste taxpayers' money redoing something that organizations are already doing that are funded outside the taxpayers' money. I, like I said, boots on the ground. People, the biggest failure I think that I see in this plan is the education aspect of it. People are getting so much misinformation. They're not educated. And there's so many creative ways that we can execute that on, on a county level. I was able to help with a $500 million cleanup with the 2022 N D A A, 168 million prior to that, $10 billion towards the infrastructure, 29 more PFOS on the U C M R5. And I was able to go to the table with the EPA, DOD, DOD, A T S D R, and CDC on these issues. It's being cleaned up. There is money going towards it. We do not need to waste any more money. The taxpayers want you to fix it. They want us to do the studies and to get the answers and the data to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Lou? And after Lou, Courtney Barker?
Hi. Thank you very much. Lou Kotnick, 3208 Birdsong Court in Melbourne. I represent the Brevard Indian River Lagoon Coalition and the recently formed Indian River, Indian River Lagoon Roundtable. I've followed the SOARL Plan, the C O C and the Commission's actions closely over the past several years. I believe that we all understand that the lagoon is in trouble and that we all want to see it brought back. I also believe that the lagoon's problems are complex and through science that we continue to learn more about them and the best solutions that we have going forward. That's why I thank Brevard voters who approved the SOARL program, you, the Commissioners, that support it, the community for its ongoing comments into the SOARL program, and the SOARL staff and C O C who have worked tirelessly to organize and operate the plan and to look deeply into the information to make adjustments to incorporate our new understandings. Best of all, from my point of view, the SOARL program is working. Currently, there are 80 projects that have been completed or are under construction. That's great. Another 115 are contracted and/or in design. The plan has reduced total nitrogen into the lagoon by some 100,000 pounds per year. And the 22, 2022 plan adds 18 new projects, requests, bringing the total to 337 restoring projects. All of the efforts, as complex as a SOARL plan, face issues and questions. That's just life. The staff and the C O C have proven that they can honestly and publicly dig into these questions. So let's let the legitimate issues be examined by our existing process. Let's approve the plan. Let's help the lagoon. Let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Courtney? And after Courtney Barker, Philip Harris?
Good morning. Courtney Barker on the C O C. And I've been a part of the C O C since the beginning of the plan. So I'm one of the founding members of the C O C. I'm here today to, to ask for your support for the plan. We did keep the list of projects this year to, very similar to the direction that you gave us previously about shifting to the, you know, the wastewater treatment and subject to sewer projects. So I think that's clearly represented in the plan. I just wanted to, before I, I stopped talking, I wanted to give a lot of kudos to the Natural Resources Department staff and Virginia Barker for all of their work. They are amazing staff and they work very hard. In addition to having to fill all these public records requests and answer all these questions, they're managing hundreds of projects. And, and that includes bids, contracts, you know, visiting sites, site inspections. It's a lot of work, all, all those contractors. So they do this all day long in addition to having to answer the questions from the public and all of the public records requests. So if it takes time, it takes time for them to fill those. I also wanted to comment about the meeting. A lot of times, unfortunately, some people perceive if other people don't agree with them, that we're not listening. And that's not the case. The, the, the committee gives all of the committee members a chance to speak, ask their, you know, ask their questions, get all the answers at the meeting. And that's clearly what happened at the meeting. And I think if you guys go back and watch that, you'll see that. So, and it, you know, to sum up, we really hope for your support. And thank you for all the support you've given the lagoon in the past. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Loebre, is this an old light?
It's for, it's for after public comment.
Oh, okay. Philip? And after Philip Harris, Craig, Craig Wallace?
It's like being on The Price is Right. All right, pick me. Okay. My name is Philip Harris. I live at 4088 Trevita Circle in Melbourne. And I'm transplant, of course, from Pennsylvania. And I moved down here about seven years ago. Shortly, like the next year, that the half-cent sales tax was passed in Brevard to help the, save our Indian River Lagoon project. And I was like thrilled. I couldn't believe it. I thought that was really wonderful. And it's been wonderful to see multiple groups, private and public, government and grassroots, working together with vision and financing that will benefit the lives of future generations of species that live in or live near the Indian River Lagoon. So I hope that SOARL will continue in its present form and that we will not lose sight of the objective of the project nor the general goodwill that is generated from Brevard County and all of Florida. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Laura Lee? Or after Craig, Craig Wallace first. I'm sorry. I just like watching you guys dance. After Craig, Laura Lee. And then after Laura Lee, Susan Hodgers?
Good morning. Craig Wallace, Satellite Beach. I'm also here representing the Brevard Indian River Lagoon Coalition. Just to give you a little bit of background, I know you guys know basically who we are. But one of our goals is to make sure that we get as much information from the, the staff and from the Citizens Oversight Committee regarding this plan and communicate that out to the public so that they get as best picture that we can. Because they, they're not going to sit in every, every C O C meeting. One of the issues that I see and I've brought up from the beginning is that if you look at the, the expenditures here and you look at public education, it's not even visible on there. So that's one of the things that we are trying to do as a coalition is to try to provide a little bit more translation of what's going on from a, not the technical, not the technical talk, but the general, the impact, the things that are important to improving the lagoon. So we spend a lot of time, we talk to just about everybody, you know. We don't have a lot of scientists in our coalition, but we do reach out to the scientists in the community. We try to get as much information. So we do believe in science-backed plan. And what we have seen from the beginning of this plan, and we sit in every C O C meeting, what we've seen from the beginning is that everything they do is based on science. And that's what we're looking for. And, you know, the, the plan has changed over the years. And we think it's because of the science that, the things that have been brought to the attention of, of the C O C, of the Natural Resources Department. And, you know, because of those things, we're able to now, you know, continue to shift the plan. And so we, we feel that, our assessment anyway, is that the plan is a good one and we, we definitely support it. So thank you.
Thank you. Laura Lee? And after Laura Lee, Susan Hodgers?
Morning. Laura Lee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, Mims. I represent tourism on the C O C, but I also represent the commercial industry, commercial fishing industry. And those are probably the two biggest industries that have been impacted by the death of the lagoon. My family, four generations of us, had, had made a living off the lagoon's waters. We can't do that anymore. We can't serve Indian River Lagoon seafood in my restaurant. So it really hurts me. And it really, it's breaking my heart to see the, the dead manatees. But we can't waste time. So you have a really good group of people on the C O C. They spend a lot of time vetting the new money and how to spend it and where to, where to place it. And every day that we, that we delay moving forward, it, it puts us backwards in the lagoon. Things will cost more in the future. So we really need, I, I hope that you guys will approve what's in front of you today. And then if you want to make some changes, you know, give us some direction on the committee and we'll be glad to consider it. We'll be glad. I mean, you look at the chart, you can see how, how it's been rearranged. We had a lot of money for muck dredging. I still believe that muck dredging is critically important. But we're, we're flexible. We'll move stuff around. If, we'll do whatever you guys want to do. But if you, if you delay the project today and then you send it back to the committee, then you slow us down and, and you stall the process. And we don't want to do that. We want to keep moving forward. So tell us what you want us to do. But please consider passing what's in front of you today and giving us guidance on what you would like to see us do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan?
Good morning. I just wanted to clarify first. I am on the C O C as a real estate member. And at the Budget Review Commission meeting last week, a few of the Commissioners had recommended that the appointee go back to their Commissioner. But I was voted by all five of the Commissioners and rated by all five. And there was three people that applied. So I'm not any person's appointee, number one. Part of the Citizen Oversight Committee as an appointee is to task, my task is for oversight, accountability, transparency. And some of the questions that I discovered when I was blocked by the public records for the seagrass, and I was told it was sunshine, I couldn't have it, I started doing more public records requests. I asked Ms. Barker for a spreadsheet of the projects with the contractors. And she's like, I've never had to do that before. I can send an email to all of you with her email that was forwarded to me. Second, I got an email from Ms. Barker at 8:41 PM last night from a public record request that I did nine days ago. So that's, as Ms. Commissioner Pritchett said, outside the terms of her parameters. So why did she send me an email last night with information not charging me right at literally the 11th hour? So a lot of these things, when I asked for just seagrass and pesticides, I wasn't asking about transferring seagrass. So if you guys go back and watch the last meeting, that's what it was. If I hadn't been obstructed by that, by saying the sunshine rule, then going back to the county attorney, county attorney Abby said, that's correct. It's not sunshine. Then I get an invoice of a outlandish rate. So to me, it's concerning that there are some people that are possibly covering up and hiding something. So why have the Citizen Oversight Committee if I'm bringing up information and people are saying that we have a definite agenda or outlandish accusations? In Brevard County, it's not, we've had misuse of funds by government officials. So to turn around and call people crazy or conspiracy theorists when you can't tell me that you, I think Joy sent me an email that there was no audit done in 2020. So you told the taxpayers that we would have an annual audit. So as elected officials, you're elected to serve the people. You're not above the people. Thank you.
We have questions. Susan, you got a sec?
Hi, Ms. Susan. I, I understand you're frustrated. And I'm, I'm sure a lot of this had to do with frustration. Let me ask you a question, though. We'll get back to that maybe a little bit. But, oops.
Sorry.
So I'm, I'm guessing that with, with this, because I tried to read through those, figure them out. Again, you, you said there was an agenda. There probably was because you're trying to get things figured out and get your information out. And you, you would want all of us to have that information and we didn't have it before. So I wanted all the Commissioners to get those emails. Whether it's good or bad, it didn't matter to me. I just want information out. I wasn't accusing you of anything evil. And as a matter of fact, I didn't even say your name. I just wanted us to have information. But my question on this is, is, is from going back and watching the SOARL Plan, I'm guessing that you wanted a different outcome as far as seagrass.
Wait. Can I answer?
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking a quick question and you can answer altogether.
Okay. I had my specific representative Fine had written an op-ed on seagrass. And then Tom Weinberg's wife had written one. So I mentioned about seagrass and the effects of pesticide. And the question was redirected by Marcy of Tetra Tech to talk about planting seagrass, which I did not say. If you go back and watch the January C O C meeting.
I, I was watching the one where y'all voted. But my question is right now, because we have to make a vote on this.
It was the same meeting.
And I really want to make a good decision here. From what we are doing right now, in your opinion, what would you request that was done different? And what science are you basing that on? This is just for us to have information right now, so we're making a good decision today. So-
Well, right now, my decision is not to approve it because I'm concerned that I couldn't even get a spreadsheet information until last night at 8:41 PM, that they couldn't tell me the specific projects and vendors of the projects. Like if I said in District 1, what projects are in District 1? What are the projects? What are the vendors? One of the elected officials took me out on a boat on Sunday and was showing me some of the dredging that was being done in Cocoa Beach, which was impressive and the water clarity. So there is being, there's good being done. But-
Can you tell me what it is, though, in the plan that you would want to see different right now?
Well, transparency and accountability of not being able to, for me-
I, I understand what you're saying. I understand your frustration.
Can I finish what I'm saying? If I went over to the clerk of court, I sent a thing in for Tetra Tech and Close Waters. They were able to whip out something from I T, send me the information within a few days. I sent this in to Ms. Barker nine days ago. And I sent it into the county attorney's office and Ms. Barker responded to me saying I couldn't have it due to sunshine. So thanks.
Well, I mean, I'll let them respond a minute. I, I don't want to do the, the public records request right now. I'm-
I'm just asking to not approve the plan.
I'm a firm believer in, in public records. And we're, we're probably going to go through all that in a little bit. But my question is right now, in this plan, if you're queen for a day, what is it that you want to tweak and make different for this board to approve? What specifically is it that you're in disagreement with right now?
To go back and look at all the projects and be able to talk about the spending and the contractors, which-
Well, you've been on the board. I, I would just, I, we're going to make a vote here and I really want your input right now.
I'm asking you not to approve the plan. Thank you.
Oh, that's, that's not helping me. Hold on just a second. Okay. Not going to get answers. Ma'am?
Does she not want to answer any more questions?
I'm not here for cross-inclusion. I ask questions.
It was. I was just asking you. That was appropriate, right?
Commissioner, I think, and I, I'm paraphrasing here perhaps, or assuming something. But perhaps she doesn't necessarily have an answer to that because the information wasn't made available to her until less than 12 hours ago. I don't know that I would have one either.
Commissioner Loebre, if you watched it, she, she didn't want to pass it because of seagrass. But I wanted her to explain that to us right now. She's on the board. They've got that information from the presentations. I don't want to miss anything here today. If she put out a newspaper article, and I, and I have problems with a lot of the things put in here. And it's, it's okay. Everybody's allowed to say stuff. But if, if I'm trying to get real information right now, this is the time to give it to us. So that's, that's my request right now. But it's, it's, it's fine.
All right. Commissioner Loebre?
It's still for after, after public comment. Are we done with it?
We're done with public comment.
Okay. I've, I've got some things that I want to get across here and bear with me because I was just jotting this down as we were doing- about 100,000 pounds a year in the form of organics as a result of the sorrel projects. Is that right? I see Virginia nodding, and I see Lou nodding. So, I'm gonna stick with that metric. I want to talk about one sewage spill, one. At the end of 2020, moving into the beginning of 2021, Titusville, and I don't mean to pick on D1, they had a utility leak that put out 7.2 million gallons of raw sewage. Guess where that ended up? You got it. Pure freshwater, and I know this because I've had fish tanks for almost as long as they've been alive, weighs 8.4 pounds. Saltwater's heavier. Brackish water is heavier than freshwater as well. If you have anything that is in the water, it increases the weight. So, when I'm talking about a 7.2 million gallon affluent leak, we're talking raw sewage. So, it is certainly more than 8.4 pounds per gallon, because freshwater with nothing in it is 8.4. Recognizing that there's no way that raw sewage weighs less than pure water, if we stick with, let's just say, eight and a half pounds per gallon, which is an overly conservative number, in reality, it's gonna be heavier. Let's say raw sewage weighs eight and a half pounds a gallon. You take 7.2 million gallons, and if the little calculator app on here is right, you multiply that by eight and a half pounds per gallon, you're talking 59 and a half million pounds of raw sewage. Again, guess where that went? 59 and a half million pounds of literally crap and other stuff. I'm sure there were pharmaceuticals, and you probably had bacteria, viruses, because again, this is untreated. This is what goes down the toilet and down your drain. So, it's whatever's down there. And again, we're focusing just on the organics here, because that's the metric that was discussed. If we assume that less than 2%, 1 and 3/4%, and why? Because it's a low number, and I'm confident it's lower than what the real number is. Let's say 1 and 3/4% of that raw sewage is organic. That's over a million pounds of organics at 1 and 3/4% of the overall being organics, and it may be 10 times that, but I'm being very conservative here, both in the weight and in the percentage of organics. As Virginia mentioned, and as Lou mentioned, the pound, the plan is removing 100,000 pounds of organics per year. If that's representative of other years prior and future, that million pounds of organics over the 10-year lifespan of the sorrel tax and the roughly half billion dollars, if we could have prevented the one spill, it would have been worth more than the 80 projects, I think Lou said, were completed or under construction with another 115 upcoming. It would have been worth more than all of those, because we would have gotten the goal of removing organics to that degree, or a greater degree, in fact, if we could have prevented that one spill. So, everyone's spinning their wheels. We have a COC. We have the county commission dealing with it. We have experts coming from everywhere. If we could have prevented that one thing, it would have been more valuable than all this nonsense put together. I just want people to put this in perspective. Wisely, in my opinion, three years ago, the commission, at least the majority of the commission, directed the COC to cut the crap, forgive the pun, and to address more as far as the sources of pollution are concerned. Thank God, that was a step in the right direction. However, since that time, we've not really made any meaningful additional steps in that direction. I voted for it, not because I thought three years ago it was wonderful, but because I thought there was a good faith effort on the other part, on the other side of things, to work with us. Okay, I could work with that, but that essentially has stagnated. My opinion as to why, and I'm speculating here, I admit that, but from what I've seen and from what I'm looking at in the direction I'm looking today, there are certain individuals that the COC has kowtowed to, who, to their credit, have figured out how to lobby very effectively to have their particular grant recipient of choice, which may be someone they work for, get a disproportionate share of the grant funding. We have some of these same individuals who try to argue that, well, the utilities should be paid for by the folks that are on utilities. I'm looking, and I honest to God did not know that Ms. Sullivan was gonna hand this out today, the ballot language that the voters voted on to approve back in 16. It doesn't talk about giving municipalities their wedge of the pie or their share of the pie. It talks about resolving the problem. Doesn't say anything about making sure that Satellite Beach or any other city gets a particular share. Talks about resolving the problem. And I'll tell you, my district is confined to the central part of the county. If none of the money went to my district because it's better from a return on investment standpoint, preventing a 7.2 million gallon leak in Titusville, spend it all there, don't give anything to my folks. That's fine, because that's what the voters voted to do, not to give any particular little municipality that happens to be excellent in lobbying, and kudos to particular municipalities, one in particular who seems to involve itself in everything from redistricting to sorrel to whatever you have. That's not what the voters wanted. If you look at the language here, I mean, unless you're just closing your eyes to it, there's nothing that talks about that. They want the problem resolved, and what we need to do is to knock this crap off once and for all and do it purely based on ROI. I appreciate that they've ranked things based on that as far as the projects are concerned, but why are we doing anything that's not ROI-based? Why don't we put in the utility issues where we have, my building is from 1963 that my office is in. It's got asbestos in the walls. I'm not moaning about it, but I'm pointing out, we've got infrastructure that's as old as that under the ground. The stuff is supposed to last a quarter century. Guess what? That's come and gone. The stuff is older than I am by far, a lot of it. It's got a 25, 30-year life expectancy. What do you think happens after 30 years, or 35 years, or 40 years? Doesn't last indefinitely. There's a reason it's a life expectancy. You may get a person that lives to be 100 years old, but that ain't common. So, I'm not gonna vote for it today. I think even if I were okay with last year's plan, and I wasn't for the same reason I just mentioned, my real concern, over and above what I've just mentioned, is we've been getting costs back, whether it's utilities, whether it's natural resources, whether it's public works, including road and bridges, that have been double-digit percent higher than what we've anticipated. This is not me. Talk to any of the staff members, talk to any of the directors for those departments. All of these things are coming back substantially higher than what we banked on. I'm not gonna go throw Biden under the bus as much as I might want to, to say it's inflation or Bidenflation. Okay, I kind of did in a little bit of a backhanded way. I'm sorry, I couldn't help myself there. But the point is, these things are getting more and more expensive, and I don't know why we're adding 18 projects when we really don't know what the true cost of the existing approved projects will be. Frankly, any additional money that we're able to bring in over what we anticipated, I think, needs to be put in reserves, even if you discount everything that I've just said as far as why we shouldn't be doing things the way we are, because I don't know that we're gonna have the funding to pay for all of it. So, I'm not voting for this. We were going the right way before. We're not at this point. I respect other folks' votes, but this is not the way forward.
Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And to put this in perspective, it appears as Russia just invaded the Ukraine. So, there are bigger issues out there, and this one is pretty minor.
What?
Yeah. So, I'd like to amend the upcoming motion, and this one shouldn't be too controversial, but to authorize staff to apply the increased cost share formula for the 2022 plan to early adopters of advanced septic system. There were some folks that went ahead and did this, and when I say some folks, I mean three. At the 700 pound, $700 per pound, we recently updated it to $1,200. Three people got caught as, at the 700, as opposed to had they waited and got the full $1,200. The difference for those three people and the impact on the plan would be $17,305. I've run this by Ms. Barker as well as a couple of members on the COC, and did not hear any pushback. So, just wanted to give folks the heads up on that.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Loeb, thanks for bringing up Titusville, by the way.
Sorry.
It's all right. You know, part of the problem, I remember when I first got into office, I went and talked to Ms. Barker, is that some areas of our county are really, really old, and I moved over here when I was little, that's how old they are. And some of these old pipes, we're having problems with them, and it's gonna take a long time and a lot of money to get underground and fix a lot of these things, and we've got to work as speediently as we can towards it, but it's, this is not as quick a process. Commissioner Tabia, it sounds like a good idea, and I looked over there, and I guess you've ran it by them, and they're pretty comfortable with it, too, so it probably sounds like it's something I'm gonna support. The thing with all this is, it's so important that the commissioners get information. We vote this, and so when there is any kind of lack of information that the five of us don't get, we can't bring forth good votes moving forward, and that's what we're about, is getting information and moving forward. And if that gets hung up, there's a pretty big problem as well. I do want to state one thing, Commissioner Tabia, I can give you this if you want, I actually transcribed, but you're the only one that wasn't at the meeting, but the rest of us were, and we know. But I want to state this very clearly, and I hope the newspaper will print this. There was not one mention of trying to hold up public records request, not one. The request was that Ms. Virginia would focus on this meeting today, which was two days after that meeting, to make sure we got enough information to make good decisions. As far as all the personal attacks on her, you know, sending things, and she'll send you out stuff, I'm pretty confident that's gonna end up, ended in a good place anyways. But I've learned long enough that when you don't agree with somebody, all of a sudden you end up with rabbit trails, and you can go down all kinds of tracks, and you don't end up where you need to be to make good decisions. And I will never apologize for guarding that, of making sure we have good information to make good decisions moving forward. I'm also a little concerned that we're accused of rubber stamping things. I mean, I don't know how many times we frustrate the fire out of staff by sending stuff back. Commissioner Loeb, you're really guilty of this. Last time you sent it back, and we changed the whole plan. So, it's just the farthest thing from the truth, and accusations go out, and it's so easy just to say stuff, and I think people think if they say it four times and write it once, it becomes the truth. It's just not true. You can put five little facts together, and you don't paint the truth. The goal is to be finding truth and to seek truth, and I really have a lot of problem with some of the things going around, and I'm not gonna back up from it, because it is good for this community to always have the best representation they have making good decisions. It's not always perfect, but I don't apologize for that, and if you got issue with that, print the paper away. I don't care. But eventually, the truth will come out, and people will know the truth, and I just wanted to say all that, because I'm really concerned about that. And so, I'm gonna throw out a recommendation. If you ever have trouble with these things, get ahold of your commissioner, all five commissioners, and give them information. That is the best way of making sure that the best public process happens at the end of the day. Thank you.
Commissioner Loeb?
I'm gonna pass at this point.
Yeah, and I would just say the same thing. If Ms. Hodgers or anybody else wasn't getting information, rather than reaching out to only one commissioner, several emails back and forth with District Two office, we can't even address the problem, should there be a problem that exists. So, again, deciding, you know, a couple of weeks before the plan comes to the board, when you've been sitting on the board for an entire year, that information could have been asked for, and you asked to create a spreadsheet. I mean, every project, I'm assuming Ms. Barker comes before that board, every vendor is known, it's all fully disclosed, correct?
All the projects come before the board. The vendor contracts go through the procurement policy, you know, whether that is an open bid for lowest price, or whether that is an RFQ for the most qualified firm. So, just to clarify, the records, the county has two different databases. There's one database where all the expenses, all the budget and the expenses happen, and then there's a completely separate database that is the contracts management system, where all of the contracts and the vendor information exists.
Because you were asked to create a spreadsheet, correct?
I was asked to create a spreadsheet that would have required pulling information from two different databases.
And that wasn't a direction, and that wasn't a direction from your board, it was a direction from one board member, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And nine days on public records, is that acceptable, Abby?
There is no mandatory deadline for records. We do as expedient.
It has to be reasonable.
Yes, reasonable.
Because I think a lot of these issues could have been addressed, and perhaps even this op-ed that, again, told partial truths and probably blew up a lot worse than it needed to be. Just let us know, if you feel like you're being obstructed or you're not getting the information, your best bet is to come to the commission or email commissioners, because we're your best advocates. I mean, we've, and to say that, that rubber stamping thing kind of irked me a little bit, too, because we've refused the plan. We've sent it back to the board, much to the board's frustration. As a majority, the board wasn't happy, but that's the reason why the plan's been modified so much. But we've kicked, we've rejected the plan plenty of times when we haven't agreed with it. So, again, it makes for good print, but it's not always the truth. So, I don't want to keep dancing around, I don't want to, yeah, I don't, we're kind of getting off of what we're doing here, so I'll just let it go. But Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just quickly, like so many, Indian River Lagoon residents, go out with emotion. I live on and play on and in the Indian River Lagoon. In fact, Wayne de Vries doesn't know many people see or have more in Indian River Lagoon residents. I am emotionally invested, like I think everybody is, but I am in a position, one of your fellow commissioners, where I must look at all the aspects and see that they are addressed, but buried in the deepest ocean. I do support the, Jim Barfield, Virginia Barker, and myself, that many men towers traveled down county back in 2016, I guess it was, leading to groups of tons of Indian River Lagoon attacks. And primarily, we were people with the facts, leaving it up to them. We weren't pushing the plan, as we were just trying to give them the facts. I realize, Earl, that emotion was very high for most folks on their list of reasons to support or not support. I don't think that's changed, but we have COC making suggestions, offering solutions, and those solutions and those suggestions passed on to scientists who weigh pro and con, and then he gets to vote supporting information, and then that's forwarded on us, and it's several of you all. We dissect this stuff, and if we're not happy with it, in fact, so there's an awful lot of oversight, not just from the oversight, but the scientists themselves, the commissioners, commissioners themselves. So, I want to end my conference at that point, because anything else would be done, but I am very, very proud of where we've gotten to from 2006, collecting a lot of money, supporting the program, making a lot of progress, and it's perfect, probably, but I think we have an awful lot to be proud of.
I think I got enough of that. A little choppy, but Commissioner Loeb?
Couple of thoughts. First, as to what Mr., pardon me, Commissioner Tabia had mentioned. I don't know that it necessarily is innocuous, as you may have read it, and I say that because, I'll give you a quick analogy. So, when I first got on the board, there were some concerns on one of the CRA's spending, and I agreed with those concerns. I sat in a meeting where they literally asked a beautification grant recipient as they were walking out of the door after the discussion was over, "Oh, hey, did you put an ADA accessible entryway here? Oh, yeah, I did. Oh, well, you just need to fill out an eight and a half by 11 sheet of paper and you'll get an extra $1,000." So, there's no ROI for that. I understand it may be the right thing to do in the sense of having these people put on equal footing and not wanting to penalize them for jumping into it a little bit earlier than others, but the concern that I have is the ROI, because it's already done. It's not that we're gonna get more folks on advanced septic, because we essentially make these folks whole, even if that may otherwise be the right thing to do. I just think that we have a greater obligation to chipping away more so at the problem than to making people happy. Aside from that, a couple other thoughts as to what's been going around, not to belabor it too much. I don't know what it would have accomplished had Ms. Hodgers emailed everyone else, although certainly she's welcome to do that, other than, I guess, the one downside is potentially you might run into a sunshine issue, as interesting as that may be, given the history with this particular item. But when she emailed me, it's not that, well, the other commissioners didn't have a chance to fix it. It got fixed almost immediately. I wrote back to her, I sent Abby an email, and it was done within 12 hours, maybe, a day at most. So, it wasn't something that I wasn't able to resolve, and if she wanted, I mean, if you guys want to get copies of everything I get, it doesn't matter to me, but in this case, it would not have accomplished anything. And I think it's great to talk about certain aspects of Ms. Hodgers' request that may have required either extraordinary work or spending time, regenerating a record where a record doesn't exist. That's well and good, but we're kind of glossing over the most important part, at least in my opinion, as to the whole crux of her argument. We put someone on the COC to advise us, and then we had a department director who, God That's well and good, but we're kind of glossing over the most important part, at least in my opinion, as to the whole crux of her argument. We put someone on the COC to advise us, and then we had a department director, who, God bless her, graduated from Duke, not an idiot, far from an idiot, wrongly tell our COC appointee that sunshine law either did or may preclude production of the requested records. I'm not going to say she did it maliciously or intentionally, it doesn't matter what I think, but that wasn't correct. And I can tell you, my intention to get involved was to avoid the county being sued because we told her something we weren't lawfully entitled to tell her. And when I say "we," I don't mean any of us sitting here, I mean our Duke graduate department director, who's been here long enough that frankly, she should know better. So as far as anyone else with a comparable, and I was just looking through some PRR records that I had, I don't know that anyone has ever been told in response to a public records request, other than Ms. Hodges, that sunshine may preclude the production. I don't have any record that it's ever happened before. Maybe it has, but I've not been able to find one looking up here. So I agree with you in that there may have been aspects of her request where a nine-day turnaround is totally reasonable. But that's where I'm at.
Ms. Jorinbi?
Yes, if I could just clarify, so how my office got involved, there was a records request to Ms. Barker. She had a question about sunshine, and there was some confusion there. And I got pulled in when there was that question, whether those emails that were requested by Ms. Hodges could actually be turned over to Ms. Hodges due to sunshine. I did clarify that, but there was really no attempt. It was just some confusion, and I did clear that up with Ms. Barker. I don't think there was any attempt to try to block those records going out. It's just, once I got involved and that question could be cleared up, then we worked on that public records request, which did actually request a lot of records. So that's where my office also helps the department generate that bill, and that bill goes to the cost.
And that would be my second question. And technically, if you create a new spreadsheet, you're creating the public record, correct?
That is correct. So we do instruct the departments, we are not to create new records. We only provide records that we have. If for some reason we don't have a record, then the responsive, there is no request, no records responsive to that request.
Okay. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, just real quickly, a follow-up on that. Commissioner Loeb, I don't mind if people send you emails and ask you questions. My point was that it might have been a little bit more expedient for us to get some of those as well, because until I brought up the information that we get this and read through some of these concerns, because there was an agenda, the agenda was the seagrass, and we didn't have the concerns, there's no way for us to know. So we've only got one commissioner knowing, but you've got to have three to vote this through. So that was my point. I think as moving forward, we have a communication issue, and if people that have concerns, if they would reach out and at least let us know.
Sure.
And then it doesn't seem like there's a conspiracy thing going on. I never use those terms on purpose, because I just realized we didn't have information. And we had to have that information, because in all fairness, other people had it, except the people that had to vote on it, and that's not a very good thing to do. It's hard to work through some of this. I don't know how much Ms. Hodges was able to watch the meeting and get it, or if she heard secondhand with stuff. Because that's what I'm thinking, it's a frustrated article she wrote, and it's probably comments to a lot of her frustration. And so when I'm working through this, I try not to get a lot of emotional things in it, I'm trying to pull out information. So it was a little difficult today, and I understand she's still frustrated. But I was sincerely trying to find out if there was some reason we needed to put a halt on this today. So as far as the public records, we've got to work through this and figure this out. I think there's just too much, this happened, this happened, I think this happened. We really need to find out what we need to do moving forward, and get the best path we can to get information to people. I mean, I totally get it. But I think we're getting a little sidetracked. I understand, but we've had a lot of sidetracking go on, Madam Chair, so I don't think it was necessarily, if you wouldn't mind me expanding on some of those things, because I get very concerned. You know, you can lie about me to other people, but it's really hard to lie about me to me, because I'm always there. So I really need to get that straightened out, because I'm always trying to get truth, I just want to get truth and seek after truth and move forward, and hopefully I come off as a grown-up by the time we're done, and I'm done, ma'am. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I make a motion to approve J. 1?
Okay, do you want the motion with Commissioner Tobias' changes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have, I don't think when you're hitting your button, it always goes through. I think you really have to hit it. Did you hit it?
No, I was just hitting the microphone.
Oh, okay.
For the vote.
I have a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes for one. All right. Yes. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ordinance 2016-15, Section 17, Paragraph B, reads, "Appointees must have field of expertise." We have an appointee who has an inactive license, inactive, is not working or inoperative, according to DBPR on 2/21/22, as of yesterday. Section 2213 addresses the removal, and that is done by a simple majority. So I have a motion, I'd like to make a motion to remove an appointee and immediately advertise for a replacement due to an inactive license as of yesterday, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Loeb?
Could we get just a little more info? Because I don't, I'm looking at the agenda, and I get it still early in the week yet, but either the order has changed, or there's something I'm not seeing here. Could someone help me out a little bit on this one? I'm looking after J. 1, the next item I saw was the federal legislative lobbying services on the agenda.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. And I can address the meeting that this was brought up, that no motions that weren't in the meeting, but that one failed. I think I've tried it twice. So this is a motion that, this just came to my attention again, the DBPR was, search was on 2/21. If there's new information, so be it, but...
Is this with SORL, or?
That is correct. Again, I delineated ordinance 2016-15.
Can you tell us where to find that?
I mean, I have a copy of it, ordinance 2016.
No, I mean, we're looking up a...
Sorry, Section 17, Paragraph B, details the appointment process.
I'm just pulling up the DBPR page now, do we have a name?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. You're looking for the licensing information.
Yes, sir.
If you, you can pull that up on licensing details, and you can search, I mean, you want a license number? It's SL3217990.
3217990?
Yes, and I only have one copy, but you're welcome to look at it, make copies of it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tobias, are you saying someone's on a board that doesn't qualify to be on the board?
No, not necessarily. I just think that there may be individuals who better represent that as they have active licenses. According to, since that ordinance doesn't specifically deal with the removal, consulting the county attorney's office, she mentioned that removal would best be handled in Section 2213. It is done through a simple majority, so there would need, according to the county attorney, three votes to remove someone. And that is in the motion to remove, and then advertise for a replacement for someone that could better represent that field of expertise.
Okay. Commissioner Loeb?
I'm just looking at this based on that sales license number that was provided. And I do see, there's a status of an expiration, the status says current, and the expiration says inactive, but it shows 9/30 of 22 is the expiration, so it doesn't look like that it's expired, it does look like it's current. I'm not sure what inactive means, and I'm happy to consider this, I just, I'd like to do a little more recon on my end before voting to pull someone off an advisory board. So if you're amenable to adding this to the eighth, as with the other items, if you're okay with it, I don't mind it necessarily even being on consent, and if there's not an issue, I won't pull it.
Can we stay in what you were talking about?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
According to terms and status used by Division of Real Estate, revised 707/2021, defines current slash inactive, quote, "This means a license has met all renewal requirements, but is not actively participating in real estate services." I also have a copy of that, should you want that, and I'd be more than willing to.
I appreciate it. This is one of those things where, you know, I know we've talked about in the past, as you've mentioned, avoiding having motions on things that aren't on the agenda. Are we having a meeting for this group between now and we come back on the eighth? If we're not, I don't know why we've got to just basically shotgun it through right now. I may support it on the eighth, I just, I'd like to have more than glancing at a folded over eight and a half by 11 sheet in the middle of a meeting to figure out whether I'm going to remove someone. That's my concern.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I'm guessing through this with the conversation, because I'm looking right here in the article, it's Susan Hammerlin Hodges, is that what we're talking about?
I was trying to refrain from using names, Madam Chair, but that...
Okay, I'm sorry. I get it, because I see where she is, the real estate appointee in her article. So, and I do know she works as a physician's assistant, and they, I'm not going to say where, but they have a good business. So my question is, that when we appointed this person, she was working real estate?
I don't think she's ever worked in real estate, but I can say for sure. But that's why I didn't support the appointment myself, so...
Okay. Okay, so now, I, you know, I, okay, I need to figure this out with you, because that's definitely a place that we had open for a real estate appointee, right?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Yes. However, again, and I should have made copies of this, I apologize, and I will pass them out, but DBPR, as of yesterday at 3:13 PM, lists the status as current, comma, inactive, according to myfloridelicens.com, produced by the state. This means a licensee has met renewal requirements, but is not actively participating in real estate services. So again, I'm not dealing with the content, I think that's been mentioned, whether you agree or disagree with what was said, whether you agree or disagree with disparaging hard working staff members. I'm not arguing that. I do take some offense, though, on disparaging Duke, that's a fine university.
Oh, I love Duke.
Richard Dixon graduated law school there. But I, for the reasons stated, the motion stands to, I don't know if there'll be a second, but I think I've provided, and I'll provide copies of the information I have here, to remove the real estate appointee and advertise for a replacement, hopefully someone that has an active license and is engaged in real estate services.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. I'm in agreement with Loeb on this. I would really like to look into this a little bit more, brought up at the next meeting, bring on us at the next, it doesn't get us to really...
I think I got that.
He said he wanted to wait with Commissioner Loeb.
Yeah. Ms. Abby?
Yes, ma'am.
If someone, I mean, in your legal opinion, if someone doesn't have an active, or isn't actively working as a, in the real estate field, would they qualify for that slot?
You know, I would have to actually speak with staff as to how they evaluate those applications, as far as whether you have to have an active real estate license or not. I would note that under Chapter 2, the commission has the wherewithal to remove with or without cause an individual from an advisory board. So I can answer that question, but as far as what they're looking for as a real estate agent, or whether it's a broker, or they have to have an active license, I have to look into that a little bit more.
I think probably the intent of it is they have to be in the real estate.
I would imagine that's what they're looking for when they receive the applications, but I have not been involved in that process.
I don't have the enabling ordinance in front of me, but I believe it was, you know, real estate expertise. I don't recall it specifying an active license, but the idea was that the different categories of people would be actively engaged with whatever that expertise was, so that they would be conveying information and ideas, you know, back and forth between that community of concern and the oversight committee.
Again, for me, it's an easy one, because I didn't, I supported the, I think we had two applications at that time for that position. I believe so.
I believe she just said she was one of three, but I haven't looked that up recently.
Well, there was a really qualified candidate, I think his name was Ron Becker, does that sound familiar?
Yes, and there was also the person who was in the non-voting alternate seat at that time, Dennis Basil, who has been a leader in various Realtor organizations. But he has since resigned, that's why there is the vacancy that was Item F1 on today's agenda. So we do have five other current applicants from that search, that, you know, the applicants that were just sent to the League of Cities.
Okay. Commissioner Pritchett?
I just heard crickets up there, so funny at that moment. Okay, Commissioner Tobias, I want to vote and support this today, but on the risk of it looking like that we're having a knee-jerk reaction to someone questioning us on public records, if you wouldn't mind bringing it back in March, so we can discuss that. But if we have somebody that's supposed to fulfill a certain position on a board, that's a problem, and we probably need to get that information and look at it. But I, if you bring it back next week, and we don't have any changes, any more information, I'm going to vote with you to do it, just so we can have all those right people on this board, because it's such an important oversight board. And nothing to do with personalities or opinions, everybody's allowed to say and do what they want, I will fight for your right to have it, but sir, you have my attention on this, and so I'm going to request that with Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Loeb, that you bring it back the very first meeting, and we vote on this at that meeting.
Commissioner Tobias?
Madam Chair, clearly, the support is not there. There needs to be a majority in order to do that, so I don't want to put you in a tough position, so I will pull it...
No, I think the majority's not there, even if I agree with you.
Oh, to be very clear, yes, I don't want to put you in the tough position to be a second, and then go down two to three on that one.
But again, for me, I didn't support that appointment to begin with, because I knew she didn't work in real estate.
You're rubbing it, yeah, I think, I think that individual is number one on my selection on that. So you are correct, and I am incorrect.
So you bring it back in March, sir?
Okay.
If you don't, I'm tempted to vote on it now, just because of the predicament we're in, but if you could do that, it would...
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I mean, I'm looking at, I'm looking at my agenda here for the next time. I've got changes to towing, I've got changes to parks, I've got changes to library, I've got a staff member out there, Gabe, who is just sweating right now, as far as what's going to happen in the next, you know, two weeks, and he may run to the top floor. So, you know, I would rather us take, I would rather us take action, instead of let this, let this fester again. This has nothing to do with an op-ed, I didn't even discuss it. I'm just concerned, you know, with information that, again, I polled yesterday at 3:13, it was cited in the newspaper, and I looked it up, and this is the information, again, that I found. So I'd prefer a vote, right? I'd prefer a vote right now, will I bring it up again? You know, honestly, I have these other three things that are pretty heavy, and I don't want to burden, I don't want to burden Gabe over there with that. So I'd prefer an affirmative.
Commissioner Loeb?
This is really directed mostly to Commissioner Pritchett. I just want to highlight, I think you hit the nail on the head, as far as the optics are concerned, this is going to look retaliatory if we do it today. Whether or not it takes place in the future, it's a different matter potentially. You know that Florida Today, or at least I imagine you know that Florida Today, for a variety of reasons, has proven that they're untrustworthy. If we had Sheriff Ivey go investigate a robbery, the headline will be, "Sheriff Ivey Involved in Robbery," to just mislead the living heck out of people. I agree that we can't count on them to cover things fairly. Given the history, given what we've heard, as far as, and let's go ahead and phrase it as a mistake, given that there was mistaken information provided to Ms. Hodges, it tends to lend credibility to folks who are going to say that this is retaliatory, and I don't like it, I just think that's a bad way to go about it.
I, ma'am, I don't want to do anything to hurt public trust. Commissioner Tobias, are you okay if I bring this next meeting, then?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
You will have my support, should you bring it next meeting. I greatly appreciate it.
Okay, because that way, if we have somebody on the board that's not appropriate, then we can talk about it at that meeting, we all have time to gather data. That way, it's not retaliatory, it's not that word, but it's, I'm just trying to do the best for the community. So nothing on the person or anything with it, but when these things come to our attention, it's something we should do as a commission.
So again, Madam Chair?
I'll bring it next meeting.
I'll pull my motion.
Okay. Commissioner Loeb?
Madam Chair, I was going to say, just, I'm thinking, as Commissioner Tobias just mentioned, he's got a whole slew, basically, Commissioner Tobias Day coming up on the eighth. Maybe we put this on the zoning meeting on the third instead. If you all are okay with that, I don't have any problem with it. Is that all right?
How, is it going to be hard for us just to gather data? It's basically us having a discussion whether it's allowed to be on the board or not, right?
It's up to you. I mean, if you guys are good having it on the eighth, that's fine, I just think it's a lot, if you want it the third, that's fine.
Public can always give comment, but we're actually just trying to determine if she's even allowed to be on the board at this point, and that's just something we would do, it's just administrative, right?
My opinion.
Okay, so it should be pretty quick. So, and if it's fine, we're fine, and if not... So, and if it's fine, we're fine, and if not, we'll just make changes.
So, are you all okay with it going on the zoning meeting, then, on the third?
Whatever, Commissioner Pritchett.
I, I don't, it doesn't matter to me, I don't think it's going to be tough. Do we have any meetings before then that's going to cause any harm?
No, the next meeting of the Oversight Committee is the third Friday in March.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'll bring it back on the zoning meeting. Ms. Carol, if you write that down, and we'll get it ready.
All right. That was fun. Where are we at? J2? Item J2?
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is a request for staff direction relating to the federal lobbyist services. We're recommending either to authorize the development in advertising of a request for proposal for federal lobbyist services with the approval of Ian Golden, Housing and Human Services Director, Terry Jordan, Transit Services Director, Amanda Elmore, Natural Resources Department Deputy Director, a county commissioner, if the county board would like to, Commissioner Tobias had on that committee last time, or to make our determination that the federal lobbyist service is no longer needed. This contract expires in May of this year.
Commissioner Loebur.
All right, I'm going to put my attorney hat on for a moment on this one. To a degree, you get what you pay for, and I say that because this is, a lot of things should go out to bid, or should go out to solicit multiple proposals. This is one of them where you're talking about a pure service, not a good, and I understand, and I'll paraphrase staff here, without throwing any particular staff member under the bus or causing them grief if we end up renewing the existing contract, which I hope we don't. We have had lobbying services in the past where the lobbyists have been far more responsive to our needs and our communications than the current lobbyist who we have. I don't think it's a good idea to renew it. The question is, do we want to have a lobbyist at all? And if so, I would take a lot of weight in staffs relaying to us who they've had good experiences with, and really who has been the biggest value for them, and then we can turn around and incorporate that in a way that's compliant with all of our procurement rules. But I think just to put it out and to go with low bidder is a mistake. You could get some kid that just graduated law school opening Joe's Lobbying Services Inc. in Tally, and they're not going to do anything for you, or in this case, in DC.
All right, I have one card. Rick Heffelfinger.
Rick Heffelfinger, 2000s, Juniper Drive, Cocoa, Florida, 32926. I'm glad I pulled a card on this, because before I, well, let me just ask, I don't, it's unclear to me what this is. Do you guys hire a lobbyist that goes to DC and snoops around to find opportunities for you to get some money from, good idea, right? Grant money and stuff like that, maybe? Again, that's, to me, that's, I think you need that, you need to find out what the feds are doing and what opportunities you may have. I think that's a good idea. But I don't understand the appointment of, I don't know who these, Ian Golden, Terry Jordan, do they work for County Now? Well, what do they?
They both do.
But that committee says select and negotiation. What does that have to do with lobbying? Am I confused?
It's to select the lobbyist.
Oh, that's a committee to select the lobbyist. Oh, okay. Well, that clears that up. So, that's the question I have with that, but since I've got some more time left, that last conversation you had about targeting that lady, that was despicable. Commissioner Tobias, I cannot, that looks like you've got a troublemaker, and you just pulled up her records. If you're going to go and talk about who's qualified, you better look at everybody. You don't just pull them up on their troublemaker, you better review them all, because that really stinks, and I 100% agree. It's like, got a troublemaker, find his technicality, throw the hell out. That was really nice, and that's all I have to say about that.
All right. No more cards.
Madam Chair, I would like to approve of J2.
Does that make a motion for J2?
I don't know that we can just approve it. I think we have some options laid out there, so it depends on the direction of the board in terms of, do we renew the existing one, which I would not support. If you want to put together a committee, I mean, if Commissioner Tobias wants to do it, great, if you want me to do it instead, that's fine, whatever you all want, but I don't think it should go back to them, certainly without having staff look at it and provide some input.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Well, to that, to the Select Committee, I guess you got your, I, um, piece of leaf, but I will just say, and I will speak slowly, perhaps you can try to say, that I've seen several different, that's obvious, and there are good ones, and there are some good, and I trust this group, Ian, Terry, Amanda, and one of our commissioners, come up with someone that could do, you know. Thank you.
Should we rock, paper, scissors for it between John and I, or Commissioner Tobias and myself? Do you all want him to do it?
I would, I would like Commissioner Tobias to do it again, if he's willing. Sorry.
Madam Chair, I'm pretty familiar with lobbying services in Tallahassee, in all honesty. My knowledge of the lobbying services that transpire in Washington DC is almost zero. I'm more than willing to sit on it. I would be in favor of, no matter, I think, what do we have, Becker, Becker and Polikoff, which are lobbyists in Tallahassee, but also they have a Washington DC contingency, and I'm not all that familiar with them. I would hope that we would open it up again and see what services, maybe put some parameters in there. I would be more than willing to sit on that, but please understand that my level of knowledge in Washington DC lobbying is nonexistent.
Motion to approve Option 1 with the committee, including Commissioner Tobias.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, item J3.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a request from the Citizen Budget Review Committee to consider amendments to their existing resolution, and attached to the agenda request are the recommended changes to that resolution.
Okay, I have one card. Mr. Peter Fusckus.
Peter Fusckus, Malabar, Florida. The Budget Review Committee works for you, the county commissioners. Our mission is to help you turn problems into opportunities in partnership with county leadership and staff. The amendment before you was supported unanimously by the Budget Review Committee. The more people who understand government accounting, the better for we, the people, and for governments' transparency, oversight, and accountability. The more eyes on the county budget, the better for transparency, oversight, and accountability. Getting a quorum, however, is sometimes difficult. Last year, two of our members were either ill or in the middle of a transfer and out of the county frequently. Meetings were canceled for a lack of a quorum. Time was lost. The amendment before you should have been before you last year, not this year. Alternates under this amendment would be able to fill in for regular members to establish a quorum, and who, because they are a member of the committee, they can cast, when the time arises, informed votes. It takes a year or much longer for some to understand the financial documents of Brevard County, and that's why alternates, I think, is a very good idea. In case of a vacancy, alternates can be considered as the replacement and can be productive in not having to take the time to learn the budget, the issues, the history, the budget process. So, the budget, understanding the budget will go a long way towards maximizing our communications with the people in the community that you work for and we work for you. The Budget Review Committee has had a very, and I have to say this, we've had a very, very positive and constructive relationship with Frank Abate, County Manager, Jill Hayes, Director of the Budget, and the leadership in the county. We work together to provide you with some alternatives, some insights, some different things that we could try, we could consider, and we can create maybe better opportunities out of existing problems, and that's our total existence. Thank you for your support, or lack thereof.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Fusckus?
Just a comment.
Thank you. I think we're good.
Okay, couple thoughts. I appreciate Mr. Fusckus and his diligence with respect to this. There are a couple of things, one of which actually has to be changed, the other of which I'm not going to support unless it's changed. If we adopt it the way that it's written, it would be adopted the 422nd day of February. Now, I know that there's such things as leap years, but I don't think any February has 422 days. So, anyone that makes a motion to approve any portion of this, I think, might want to correct that. The other thing is, as to Item 6, where it reads, "Is designated by the county manager, the CBRC, she'll have the assistance of such county staff as necessary to perform its assigned duties." My concern is, that's kind of the opposite of what a majority of the commission, at least from my perspective, had expressed with respect to COC members having the assistance of staff. If we're going to tell them that they have to submit public records requests and that staff should not go above and beyond in any, in any capacity, this is essentially saying the opposite of what was said by the commission with respect to that. So, you may want to strike Number 6. I'm not going to support it with that, because I think it's inconsistent with how we treat other advisory groups, not because I don't necessarily think it's a good idea.
Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and this is probably preferable, because I appreciate Mr. Fusckus' time on this one, but it's probably better to go with the Budget Director. So, I have a litany of questions dealing with the proposed resolution, and to be fair, I didn't catch the 422nd day, but that makes me want to vote. There might be some other ones. Madam Chair, may I ask a series of questions? Ms. Hayes, does Section 3 of the resolution remove the voting privileges of Mr. Frank Abate, County Manager, who probably, other than yourself, has the highest level of knowledge of the current $1.6 billion budget?
Yes.
Section 1 of the resolution states, "There shall be six members of the Citizen Budget Review Advisory Committee," contrary to what was just told to us. Do you think the intent was 10? Well, I don't have to say, because the individual just said 10, is that correct?
I believe that was the intent.
But as the resolution written, there's only six, is that correct?
Yes.
So, again, if we have trouble with six and 10, we probably should not be forwarding these folks with a 1.6. Anyway, sorry. The main purpose of the advisory board is to advise the Board of Commissioners, in the past five years, has the CRBC presented any formal recommendations to the board?
No.
Section 4 states, "The CRBC shall have the primary goal, the priorities and concerns of the citizens at large." My question is, do you know how the Citizen Budget Review Committee will receive these or priorities at large?
No.
The resolution, this is an uncomfortable one, I'm sorry. The resolution states that the Board of County Commissioners leaves citizens who possess a broad range of expertise and experience and, quote, "are representative of the entire community." My question to you, of the five members, voting members, six being Mr. Abate, are all these members male?
Yes.
Sorry. Are all of these members Caucasian?
Yes.
Okay, when calculating the annual cost of this board, which according to CMO's office was $2,648 in 2018, does this include the cost of staff from Public Works, Human Resources, and County Finance that also had to attend these meetings?
No.
When the CRBC asks for the advertised budget versus the final budget, variance of explanation, was staff time included in the annual cost?
No.
Over the past five years, the county has spent more than $10,000 on this board and received no work product. By doing away with this board, we are not limiting, in my opinion, the citizens or any other citizens from giving their input. So, my question is this, if the board was disbanded, would these individuals still have the opportunity to discuss their input and concerns at annual, at the annual budget workshop?
Yes.
Would these individuals still have the opportunity to meet with commissioners and discuss their concerns and input?
Yes.
Would these individuals still have the opportunity to come to regular board meetings every two weeks and discuss their concerns and input?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I end with a conclusion here?
Sure.
Mr. Fusckus says, "This board works for us." I disagree with 2/3 of that. A, they don't work, there's no product, zero product. And number two, it's not for us. And here, it says, "The priorities and concerns of the citizens at large." Again, if this is not a target of government waste, I don't know what is. If this CRBC actually cared about waste, they would disband immediately themselves. So, I, again, I appreciate the time put forward, but as was just explained, they don't represent us, they don't look like the rest of Brevard County at large, they don't provide us with any type of discernible data. I mean, maybe it's a cool coffee club, but, which they can still meet at Starbucks, but I don't honestly believe that it is a good measure of taxpayer money. So, I will be having a motion to immediately disband this wasteful organization after we get some comment, or see if any other commissioners have comment on this.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I hate following that one. I, I.
That was a kind version.
Yeah, I know. I'm very proud of you, sir. I, we haven't had any board recommendations from them either, but Mr. Fusckus has been very vocal and helped us with many things, and I appreciate all your work, sir. So, I have a little conflict here, because it's good to have citizens overseeing budgets, but I don't think this is working either, and I think throwing more, five more people into the mix probably isn't going to help a lot either. So, I asked Ms. Jill about the cost to have this board, and she gave me the up and the down part of it. So, the average time it takes for this committee per hour is $950. So, if we do continue with it, I think we need to limit the hours that staff is putting into, it's maybe 10 hours per year, so that they can do studying on their own and then come in and ask questions. You're right, sir, it does take a lot to understand this budget. It's not something you get overnight, you have to really be in it and paying a lot of attention to it. So, it does take a lot of commitment on, if people serve on this board, to even try to get the personality of it to bring good recommendations for it. So, I struggle, because I really like Mr. Fusckus so much and all the things he's brought, but I do struggle because Commissioner Tobias isn't off on what he's saying either. So, can't wait till somebody breaks this tie.
Commissioner Loebur.
And if I'm mistaken, forgive me, but I believe my prior appointment up till maybe a couple of months ago was Eileen Davis. I've not personally verified, but I don't think she's a Caucasian male. This is true? Okay, I hear someone saying it's true. I do believe, aside from being a woman, at least unless she identifies differently, that's a joke, she also could check at least the religious minority box as well. The person that I put on in her place, or to take the place that she was. The person that I put on in her place or to take the place that she was serving in is Steve Burdette, who came over from the Comptroller's Office. He'd been essentially the head honcho over in the office that audits our expenses and issues checks to all the county employees, under Scott Ellis, at least. He was there doing that. Eileen was great. I think Steve will be great, but it's, I agree, it would be nice to see a little bit more diversity on there, but I think we've got some quality people on there to begin with. As far as there being a lack of work product, that's a good point. I'll give you that. That's a very good point. I will tell you, though, that I've had several members of the Budget Review Committee approach me throughout the time I've been in office with different ideas. Some of them I've agreed with, some of them I've disagreed with. Some pertain to the amount of reserves that we have and cash flow and the ability to spend now borrowing against our reserves to lock in lower prices for road and bridge projects. It's an interesting idea. I've talked with staff about it. It certainly has made me more knowledgeable. The agenda item that I brought up probably a year ago at this point, maybe longer, for saving tax dollars and sharing as an incentive some portion of the amount saved, that was something that was spurred by Ms. Davis, based on her service on this particular committee. So, I've had agenda items that have come up as a result of this committee existing. I'm not going to say they've all been successful, but even how I handle road and bridge building within the district, I've had discussions with staff that would never have occurred but for this committee existing. So, if there's some desire to ensure that it's operating within reasonable parameters, that's one thing, but I'm not looking to disband it at all. I think it has a value, and it has a very good value.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I do want to make one comment here, if we keep it. I think we do need to limit the hours until we start seeing a product come. But on Number 4, I think the primary goal needs to be assisting the county Commissioners in reviewing and bringing recommendations. Otherwise, if you put in the part that they want to add in, we've just added another layer of government of trying to decipher these things that it's our job to do. So, if we do approve this, I would like to strike, and this is going to sound bad, the priorities and concerns of the citizens at large, because that's what we do, just so we don't have two layers of trying to interpret those concerns moving forward. So, if we did that and we're keeping it as them assisting us and trying to review this budget, that would be more appropriate, I believe. But again, I think we're going to have to limit the amount of time that staff puts towards the board, not that they can't have information, we all have that. But just until we get a product that starts coming from the board, I think we just need to be aware of the costs like we're doing with the boards right now.
Commissioner Smith, do you have any input?
No. I have, yeah.
Okay. For me, I'm throwing wrench in it some more like I did earlier. I mean, I like the budget review. I do wish they did do more, and I wish they asked tougher questions. And I know you've personally reached out to me with your suggestions, you have, and you've had some great ones, but, you know, as far as diversity of the board, I mean, you would have to reach out and encourage diversity without forcing it, because I don't want to check a box just because, you know, we're trying to change the makeup of the board. So, I wouldn't mind seeing a reinvented board, but I hate, I don't like the idea of shutting it down. Does that make sense? Do you have something you want to say, Mr. Fuskes? You can come up. Yes, come on up.
I wouldn't come up.
Just a minute, though.
Are you sure you want to come up?
You can't pull a Commissioner Loeb and talk for 10 straight minutes.
20. 20.
25.
Yes, I'd like to, in terms of product, we have developed 10, 11 solid recommendations. And we did this a year and a half ago, and we have been working on these recommendations since then. And just about every meeting that we have as Chairman of this Budget Review Committee, I have asked my members to take these recommendations and to, and I think probably Eileen did that with you, I did this with Kurt Smith, and anybody else that would listen to me, these recommendations. For us to come here, the last time I made a presentation to the board, I had five minutes to do a recommendation. And then, for the next hour, it was rebutted by the county staff. So, I said, "I'm never going to get in that position where I have absolutely no time to explain the basis of those recommendations." And so, it was, it's an individual responsibility to brief the county Commissioners, each member. And I did it with my County Commissioner, Kurt Smith. Brian was briefed by Eileen. And I'm just one of, as Chairman, I'm just the first of equals. I can't tell them what to do, and I'm not going to tell, I'm not going to, you know, force them to do things. And it saves you time in a setting like this. You want five people to spend 20 minutes explaining what their job was? Or at their leisure, they can brief you, and they can brief anybody else they want. So, maybe my laissez-faire management style, I think, is suitable. Now, and I understand where Jill comes from. She has a real burden of putting budgets together. At the same time, she has to babysit us and instruct us and gather information. After all, the government is the only record keeper, and our access to establishing transparency and accountability is our access to those records. So, when we ask questions, we have no alternative. And that's what transparency in government is all about, and that's what the Freedom of Information Act is all about, is so that we, the people, have access to your record-keeping. And that's what the Budget Review Committee is about. Notwithstanding the charm and diplomacy of Commissioner Tobia, I thank you for your understanding, but I would have appreciated it if you had called me, if you had a problem with me.
Can you direct your comments to me?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Fuskes? Hold on, hold on just a second, sir. I think what might have helped, if you guys would revamp this, maybe you guys come to consensus, and then maybe you come and present the recommendations to us, or if you come talk to each one of us, because I don't think I had a conversation. So, maybe as being the Chair, you guys come to that, and then you could volunteer, throwing you out there on a request here, that you come to each of our offices and talk to us about it, just so some of us aren't getting information. Not that you don't all work hard, but I think that would help me a lot, if you wouldn't mind, and maybe making a specific appearance here. You did it for us once in a budget meeting, and we all listened to your recommendations. So, I think that might help us a little bit with communication.
Commissioner Tobia?
Madam Chair, Mr. Fuskes, do you believe in term limits?
It depends on how you define term limits.
That is a term of service in which you begin and end.
Yes, I believe in it.
The Board set up term limits for Advisory Boards for eight years. Seeing as you believe in term limits, when did you start serving on this board, sir?
I don't recall.
I do. 2009. To the best of my knowledge, the math is, that's 12 or 13 years. Can you explain the inconsistency of believing in term limits but deciding to disregard them?
Well, your definition of terms of limit, huh, terms of limit is much different than mine. For example, you spent eight years in the Legislature as an elected official. You're going to spend eight years here as a County Commissioner. That's 16 years as a public official. Do you think that's enough term limit?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Your term limit is clearly for one position. This is a position that you have been on...
That's your definition, Commissioner. That's your definition.
Madam Chair, I understand where you're going with this. The answer is, there's an inconsistency. Can you help me here, because this is written like, you know, extremely poorly? Not only the 422nd day, which I did not catch. Was your intent to have 10, or was your intent to have six members of this board? Is your intent, so there's no, there is no wrong answer here, sir?
The Budget Review Committee, the operating basis is the Robert's Rules. Robert's Rules says the following: An ex officio member has, can attend all meetings and vote on all issues unless you establish it in the bylaws that they are not a voting member. There is no reason for the County Manager to be a voting member because...
Madam Chair, I'm just asking for a number, a 6 or a 10. I don't need a dissertation. My question is, is your intent, because the way this is written, there are six, okay? I think you were asking for this many, but you have this many. So, my question is, is if other folks are going to vote for this, I want it to be the way you want it to be, okay? We don't need a Robert's Rules. We don't need that. I'm just asking for this many or this many?
There are 10 members.
That's not true.
Let me, can I answer you?
It's right here. Would you like to read it, sir? I'll give you a copy of it. You can read it. You wrote this, not me.
Okay. I don't think this is really going anywhere. I think it's getting...
This was drafted. Never mind.
You said it is a year. This is the work product of a year. Now, remember, you're overseeing a, potentially overseeing a $1.6 billion budget, but you have trouble with the numbers of 6 and 10.
That draft was produced in December of this year.
Okay, so...
By the committee and the county attorney.
At this point, you know, I think we're probably going in circles and not getting anywhere.
I don't think I'm going to win this one, Madam Chair.
Yes. Was that you or Kurt?
I apologize.
So, I mean, me personally...
Both I and taxpayers will lose on this one, Madam Chair.
Me personally, I just, I just, again, I like the idea of oversight. I like the idea of the committee. I would just like to see something a little bit more done, maybe not quite as many meetings. That might be helpful, but you got to bring us something that I can support, because Commissioner Tobia does bring up a good point. If you're bored, and I'm not blaming you personally, and this isn't personal, because, you know, as a person, you're probably one of the finest people I know. I know this. However, if your board is not producing a product to our board or not coming to us, even if it's our members, then all we're doing is wasting a lot of staff time, because the public does have access to all these records, as you know, as we discussed at length earlier today. So, I'm...
I'd be happy to brief all of you individually if you would like.
And that's fun. That's an idea as well, but again, I would like to see a little diversity on your board, but I can't make people apply if they're not interested, but...
You guys make the appointments.
Correct. And I'm not going to support this the way it stands, so...
Madam Chair, motion to take no action today on the item.
Okay. Mr. Abate?
Thank you. I wanted to address an issue with Mr. Fuskes raised, a couple of things that I think were important. The third one, which was going to be the timeline that was in here, since you're not going to take action, if you don't, I don't have to, but let me address the two others. One, the ex officio, that's not what was being talked about. Since I've been County Manager, I've attended the meetings. I have not tried to participate, nor have I tried to vote in any way, shape, or form. So, that issue today, actually, I believe Commissioner Tobia was talking about the alternate, as to whether or not there was a sixth alternate or there'd be five alternates. It was not about, unless I misunderstood, it was not about the ex officio, just so we knew that. The second thing is, if we could please clarify, and you said some complimentary things earlier, but then you spoke to the issue of, you've had five minutes for presentation and an hour of staff rebuttal. That was not during the last five years.
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear that that was...
That is absolutely correct.
I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Your leadership has been a breath of fresh air.
All right. Thank you. Do we need a motion, Abby?
I think there was a motion made.
Doesn't hurt.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Loeb, and a second by Commissioner Pritchett.
Oh, yeah, I'm dropping, I think I made a motion. Did I?
Did you?
Yeah, if not, I'm...
I think you may have.
Yeah, I think in my anger, I made a motion, so I'll retract my motion.
Okay.
Motion to take no action today on the item.
Motion by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Phew. Guys doing okay?
I thought that was going to be an easy one.
5. Do you need 5? Okay, at the request of an unnamed individual, we're going to take 5. Sorry, guys. Five minutes, five-minute break. Five minutes, five minute break.[352.47]
But I don't know that I'm going to be able to expend them in 30 days without changing substantially the allocations that have taken place. And a lot of these allocations, even when it comes to doing things like additional training for BCFR personnel, we would have to throw that out if we had a 30-day deadline because that's not something that could be completed without massively changing what's been put in place in a 30-day timeline. But I, yeah, I would either support a motion absent the 30-day to expend it, to bring back a plan by March 30th or an intended plan by then, or if you want, I can just bring it back without a motion. And if you want, I'm happy to address which items I think would take longer than 30 days to expend.
But in reality, those expenditures of funds, those allocations can be made to those respective departments. They don't have to expend the funds, but you could make that allocation to that department. So there would be no holdup to that 30 days.
But then the money still wouldn't, the problem is it's still going to exist in the county's budget. It's not.
But you'll have expended it from your portion of the CARES fund.
It's encumbered at that point, so it's like held in a different area.
I'd have to defer to Jill or to Frank on whether or not it's technically encumbered. I don't think until it's obligated, it's encumbered.
But I think once you've allocated it to the department, you've already given it to the department, so it's out of your hands. I think that was Commissioner Tobias' concern.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, obligated, Madam Chair.
Okay.
And I.
Commissioner Pritchett?
We may have a different legal definition.
Yeah, I was just, well, the accounting thing is when you've already put it towards a one thing and it's held in that thing, there's like a legal obligation on it which encumbers it. But either way, it doesn't matter. But I think if you bring forth the plan and you send it forth and it's allocated at that time and it's reserved just for that, it's out of your hands at that point. And it goes into county's hands and they'll have it under budgets, under the allocations, and what can and can't be spent. So I think you, if you bring a plan, we'll just move forward with that. And we've already got it set forth where all the funds are going at that point and kind of spent, even though they're not all put in other people's hands.
Mr. Heffelfinger, let you get up here.
And as he's coming up, Madam Chair, if I can, just real briefly, if it's all right with you all, I'll bring back a plan and break it down. And if there's some discussion to be had as to whether something meets your definition of allocated, I think we can hash that out, or maybe I can talk to Jill beforehand. But I'm not sure that it's technically obligated. When it's transferred essentially from my authority or the authority that was delegated to me by the board to a particular department, I don't know that I would use the term obligated because I think that's actually not the meaning of the word.
Hi.
Rick Heffelfinger, 2000 Juniper Drive, Cocoa, Florida, 32926. I'm getting good at that. This is, when I talked about that public records request earlier, one of my public records requests that got denied there was documentation was on this CARES topic. So this one is, as far as I'm concerned, this whole thing smells. This is the $5 million slush fund, right? I think somebody called it a slush fund. I think it was the clerk of courts at the time. But this is that $5,000 that you got allocated to each of you and you guys burned it up and you have it. And I think doesn't, yeah, right. The guy on the phone, Kurt Smith. I think Kurt Smith may still have some money, right? Because everybody else has burned it up. Kurt's gone? I guess I can do a public records request. You said you have a spreadsheet that shows how much you have left, or you can disclose that now.
I just said I had to put the numbers together to plug in current numbers for the sheet. I'm not going to guess off the cuff as to particular numbers because if I'm off by a penny, I'm going to get excoriated for it.
Well, then I'll just ask for your guidance here. If I was going to do a public records request for your spreadsheet, you said you'd do one for the, should I give that to you or should I type it into the computer and let it go through legal? Or how should I get that?
If you want to email me and copy legal or email legal and copy me, I can get it to you. If you want the existing spreadsheet, understanding full well, the numbers aren't as of five minutes ago, but they're, I believe, as of a few weeks ago, I can give that to you in very short order. That's not going to be a month turnaround. That'll be within a day, I would presume.
Okay. If I also wanted to see where all the funds went that were expended prior to this plan to burn it down.
The best resource for that would be the comptroller's office. So it would be under the clerk. They have the cost centers and funds that are associated with every expenditure. So you can determine funding sources based on that.
Is that money currently in a fund earning interest? Is it invested or is it statically sitting somewhere?
That I don't know. I would imagine there's interest, but I'm going to defer to Jill on that as far as their short terms.
Yeah, it is part, it's in its own separate fund and within the general fund group. So the interest earnings in that fund have become part of the general fund overall.
Okay. So holding on to that's actually making you some money then. I could see why you might want to hold on to it longer, but it's an investment.
It's making general fund money. It's not that it benefits anyone in particular.
Yeah. Well, I think, okay, I'll make some requests to get some information because this one's been burning my butt ever since this happened. So hey, thanks for your time. Thanks for your info.
Thank you.
So I think I've articulated with that being the only comment card, the one change, or I should say the two changes, essentially to allow the chair to sign and to allow Abby to draft an amendment instead of a brand-new contract, should she determine that's the way to go. Otherwise, I'd just move to approve it as it's listed with those two changes.
Okay. And is Commissioner Tobias' motion going to be separate?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna, I trust Commissioner Lober on this one. My understanding, and I'm sorry, is obligated. He may have a different understanding of that, may want to meet with Ms. Hayes on that one. But I certainly will be bringing that up in the 30 days that the funds are obligated.
I would prefer it be part of the motion so it's very clear. Abby, is that, because he wouldn't be bound by that if we didn't make it part of the motion?
Well, I mean, at that point, no, if it's not part of the motion, it's something obviously he voluntarily is doing. But if you make it part of the motion, then.
So, okay. Madam Chair?
Yes.
So I've said on the record that as long as it was legal, you know, that I would support the expenditure of those funds. So I would prefer them to be different motions. The first, and it's completely up to you, this, I'd rather it be bifurcated. I will support this one as it stands. If you would like another motion that in 30 days the funds are obligated, I would support that as well.
I would prefer that, yeah. All right. Do we have a second on Commissioner Lober's motion to expend these funds for this purpose?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And Commissioner Smith had to leave because he's out of town for a wedding. So he had to go to the wedding, so. Just for the record.
If I may, Commissioner Tobias, I would say again, I have no problem bringing the plan back with or without a motion. The only concern I have is that we have the same understanding as what it means to be obligated. That's the only concern that I have with your motion.
Ms. Abbe, Ms. Toranby, can we ask you the legal definition of obligated? Is it clear? What would you prefer that language to be?
So I'm looking online as we were discussing this. And it looks like the obligation of funds is defined as a legal liability to disperse the funds immediately or a later date as a result of a series of actions. So.
I don't think it meets it.
I would have to look more into that. And then, these are accounting terms, so I'm not that familiar with them as much as they should be. But I mean, there is a term of art to that. So I'm just trying to find that answer for you, but I don't have that right now. So I mean, I think the intent is to have them marked, I suppose. Is that the word you want to use? Or obligated or allocated? Or you're using encumbered. I can look at that one as well.
Because encumbered is restricted and the action is defined anywhere else to places except for the designated area is very difficult to do. So when we apply these funds into a certain project, that's where these funds have got to go.
Mr. Abate?
I believe if what the commission does is part of the plan tells us where those resources will be allocated for what purpose, then the timeline would be fine. So it's really, once the plan allocates the resources for a specific purpose, then staff will take it from there and fulfill that purpose. The timeline, as Commissioner Lober said, may be an extended timeline for doing it, but all those funds will be used for that particular purpose.
Right. So Commissioner Tobias, I think you just wanted them allocated, correct?
Yeah, obligated. I just wanted to take the issue off the table that may or.
Just use the term allocated and I'll support it. And I think it gets done what you want.
I guess Ms. Hayes is probably the best to, I'm sorry, since she's the point person on this.
No, I think the language you used initially in your motion, you said expended, which means the funds would be spent, an actual expenditure.
Yes.
You know, the terms obligated, I think for us, allocated, allocated for a specific purpose. Currently, there are, we have certain categories where there is up to a certain amount that can be spent. So I think what you're asking for is an allocation of those specific dollar amounts.
Okay, that sounds, thank you for doing that because if not, I might have had to gone to the Citizen Budget Review Committee to get a better response on that one.
So mean. All right. So do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. The board must be provided with a specific allocation plan for all remaining CARES Funds Act by March 22, 2022, regular commission meeting. Or the remaining funds that are not allocated or obligated shall be moved to the Public Safety Fund.
That's fine. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, motion passes 4-0. All right. So we're on to item J5. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, ma'am. I worked with the county attorney. I realized from the communication problems we're having with our P cards and understanding, we had some things happen that we haven't typically happened since the county commission's been operating, that we probably had to put some parameters on the board for a board policy. So you guys have all received the policy. And what this policy will do is that our purchasing cards will be used primarily for day-to-day expenses for commission offices, purchase necessary items to operate our offices. Third-party purchases whereby third party is recipient of the purchase is prohibited. If we are doing these types of things, it'd be turned into the county, the check cash, I mean, the check written out and signed by the chair of the county commission so that we have the appropriate paper trails going through. Purchasing cards will not be used for any expenses that provide any personal benefit to a commissioner. That if you're giving reimbursements for mileage, it needs to go through the clerk's office. We don't do that for ourselves on our own. And every purchase we do on our purchasing card, we're going to put it into the bill folder so that the commissioners can see what types of purchases. We're doing that. Therefore, we are helping to have good public trust and a spirit of transparency. Because right now, I never even thought to look at what we were doing here. And so I believe that these items that are in question right now are the things that we gave marching orders to be able to do. I just think the path that we've been using here is probably not the best path. And I'm uncomfortable with it as an accountant. So I would like to get these things in order as far as what makes more sense with some paper trails. I also want to throw out another idea. I don't think we should be buying computers and these types of things on our P cards. They really need to run through the IT department. So anything that we already have a county department that's set up for, you know, if we have personnel items, it really needs to go through the payroll department as far as employee benefits. We don't even know what's taxable for engine, what isn't. And it's really their job to do. IT department, they should do in our computers, they're setting it up on the servers, making sure we're in compliance with federal and state laws. If we are rearranging our facilities, it needs to go through the county as far as the facilities department. They know how to get the best cost. So I think we need to really start limiting these cards, although the items are more than likely appropriate of what we do and we can do. I just don't think it's been the best way of accomplishing the items as far as what we've been per se charging on them. And Commissioner Lober, I'm talking about all this mess that you have, that you're having to deal with right now. So I think if we would have done this in the beginning, like even what you just did on the last one, I think there wouldn't be a lot of this conversation going on. So my motion is going to be to approve this board order and also to have in there that the computers, personnel reimbursements and things that we do to our facility are run through the county unless they're small purchase items for reasonable things. But we'll see them in bill folder. But I think computers and technology should go through the county's IT department.
Commissioner Lober?
A few things. First, before I get into the specifics, there are a couple. There's one, I think fatal flaw with the draft that you put up there, Commissioner Pritchett, which I want to get into, where you have a term that, again, is a very ambiguous term that could mean many different things to many different people. But before I get into that, I want to say one thing. This article that was first crafted by Florida Today where they said there was something about a commissioner under fire, I asked them, well, what does that mean? What does it mean I'm under fire? So there was an anonymous email, and then Florida Today generated a story based on anonymous email, that's under fire. That's what that means. So I could make something and say that Commissioner Pritchett has 20 prostitutes in her house. Florida Today could run an article on that and say Commissioner Pritchett under fire.
Yeah, that's just, Commissioner Lober.
It's a fact.
That's not even a good.
That's a little bit of a rapid track. And I don't think you've done anything wrong, sir. But I think we start comparing apples with oranges on this.
It is apples to apples. I mean, literally, you have, an anonymous email goes out, makes an allegation.
Yeah, but there was these things.
The newspaper does nothing whatsoever to verify it, and they print a story.
I don't care about the newspaper, what they have. I just want us to get some appropriate.
Well, let me help you with that.
Okay.
Because what you put up there is not that. You talk about third parties, and just as terms have meanings, this term has meaning. I asked Abby, and I think I may have asked you during the budget meeting, what does third party mean? I asked Abby as we walked out, and I asked Jill, and neither could give me a great answer because it might mean one thing to one person and one thing to another.
I go to Lowe's and buy something and take it over to a place.
Well, let me ask you, if I could just get through this.
Okay.
So technically, the only person that's entitled to use that, if you want to be real strict about it, which maybe you are, maybe you aren't, is the cardholder, and they can't buy anything else for their office. So if you have something that you want to buy for your office to use, unless you're the specific one using it, if your receptionist is using it or your legislative assistant, that's third party because now they're a third party. They're not you.
Do you have an office manager that would be buying that for your office? Like I have Carol, so if she buys something for the office.
Well, we would have to get everyone purchase cards in the office so everyone can buy their own stuff instead of having one person buy it for the office.
But it all belongs to county at that time.
That's not what you said in your draft, though, because you say third party. What I would suggest is after that, you define what that actually means. And I would say third party is anyone who's not an employee of the Board of County Commissioners, so you don't run into that problem. That addresses that issue, which I think is a fatal flaw in it, in that anyone can argue something does or doesn't fit within that particular definition. Because otherwise, you're just asking to have abuse or alleged abuse because no one knows what it means. Beyond that, I think there's something else to keep in mind with respect to the third party. POs have a staff cost in the form of the time that has to be dedicated to actually craft them. And if you have a $30 expense that can be put on a purchase card that is otherwise authorized except for this item that you put up, I mean, do you want me to have staff spend more in processing a PO than the cost of the PO is for?
Can you tell me like what type of thing? I don't have those things.
This would apply to literally anything based on how it's written.
Give me an idea because I don't have these things. I've never, I've never had to deal with this. I don't have this issue.
There are two changes I would suggest. And I think with two changes, it's far better. First, after you have the third-party line, I didn't insert another line, and I define what that means. I would define it because I think it's safe and clean and it's very easy to figure out. A third party is anyone who's not an employee of the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners. That resolves that issue. As to the other, I would say no third-party expenses unless the expenses, in this case, this resolves the issue with this, unless the expenses are funded by stimulus dollars and the vendor does not accept purchase orders and the expense is otherwise authorized.
I don't know about that part. But you know, on the third party, what we could do is anyone outside of the commission's staff office. I think that's a little cleaner.
But you got to define it some way. If you want to define it that way, that's fine.
That's why I said third-party purchase whereby the third party, we put in there no third-party purchases.
I think third-party purchases is stuff like Amazon and stuff like that, correct?
Well, that, if you buy.
If you're buying paper on Amazon, it's a half my office.
If you go into Lowe's buying something for the Humane Society, that's a third-party purchase. There's a third-party transaction there. So he's saying if Carol bought something on my P card for Jessica, which is in there, he's calling that now third-party. So to clean that up, we can put anybody outside of the commission office. This is for commissioners. So if she made any charges for him to be outside the commission office, I now have a third-party transaction. But in-house, it's not third-party.
As long as you define it, it doesn't matter. You just have to have a definition.
So you can do that?
Okay, thank you.
And then the other, again, because you're talking about, you may have an expense, whether it's Amazon or otherwise, if it's, we bought pens on Amazon, we bought paper on Amazon, we bought toner on Amazon.
You're allowed to do that.
Right, but with this.
Specifically for you.
With this, I think, okay, if, yeah, if you make the correction, yes, then that's fixed. I think that's good. As far as the other is concerned, if you pass it, you pass it. It is what it is. But you may have staff spending more money handling the POs than you do for the actual cost of the good or the service that's procured. That's the only thing I'll caution you about if you don't make any sort of an adjustment for that.
Okay, well, you guys are going to have to talk to me on that. Everything on here I don't violate. So if you've got something that you feel is going to put under, do burdens on you or the staff, y'all are going to have to talk to me and let me know. Because this is, in the past, this is what we've operated by. So you're going to have to talk to me.
I'm just bringing up to your attention the fact that that could be a problem. That's all.
Good time to have a discussion. Good time.
Yeah, but as long as you define the first, I think that's the most critical.
Is that all you have?
That's it.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is just a point of clarification. Commissioner Pritchett, I appreciate the more transparency here. Can you explain the bill folder? You mentioned that transparency for other commissioners, but I think if it's on the agenda, this also offers transparency, right, for everyone?
All of our purchase cards that go in there.
But it would be on the consent agenda on every meeting. So it's not just us, the entire public would have.
Brian, yes, sir.
Okay. I think that's a great idea, not only, again, for us, but the public to scrutinize our stuff.
All right. And I don't know if you want to go through these purchases or explain them, but I have issue. There's hundreds of purchases on this card. And I know that, you know, the explanation, and I guess depending on which source of, we know, we say Florida Today stinks and they don't report the news, but yet we reply, or we sat here and talked up here for an hour and a half about the opinion of somebody who clearly had an agenda. So again, I think we have to take each, this is very much in black and white, and there is hundreds of P card purchases on here that I want accountability for. I mean, I, and I don't know if you want to address, that's why I'm asking now. I'm not going to call you up on the phone. So that's why I'm asking in this meeting.
That's fine. And I'll go ahead and give you an explanation as to, let me go pull up.
Can I throw out an idea first, Madam Chair? Because this is going to, this is going to be hard to do this.
I don't mind.
I think, I know you don't. I think what happened, Commissioner Lober, I think you're a lawyer and not an accountant. I think, but because you've been using the P card, we don't know where these costs were allocated to. We don't know who has custody of them right now. So if, I would ask that maybe over the next four weeks or so that you would sit down with county finance or someone and you take this, and we can go ahead and allocate them to the right places and categorize them. Like other CARES thing, I can look at parish and find out exactly how much we gave them. We can't do it off of this. And they're so messed around with purchases. I mean, there's.
What does messed around mean?
Whether it's computer parts and things like that, I don't even know what they went to or anything. So before I can even ask you an intelligent question, I really kind of need you to go through these and sit down and kind of categorize them like county would have done if you turned them in to be paid, that we know where they're going. So you're going to have to sit and do this, or I'm sorry, you're the one who did it. You're the only one that's got it in your head to know where these things go.
Sure, and I.
Okay, I think that'll help us a lot. So if you would do that, I think it's going to take you a little bit of time. So maybe next four weeks or so, you kind of get that for us. You don't have to go through every line item right now.
I'm happy to go through everything listed by Florida Today because they've gone through page by page to pick what looked the most egregious.
Again, I don't care about Florida Today at all. I would just like for you to do this so we have good accounting records. And then to also, you had mentioned this before, to make sure that everything's inventoried through county staff that we have.
That's already done.
Okay, so everything in your office is inventoried? They've been there and inventoried?
Everything that meets the administrative orders requiring inventory has been inventoried.
Okay, well, like in my office, like the chairs and everything, they already have the county tags on them. You've already done all that?
Everything that meets the requirements under the admin order, even though it doesn't apply to me as a commissioner, has been inventoried. I don't, inventory sheets of paper, big pens, I don't do that.
No, no, but computers and IT security systems, I don't know if that was yours. You bought them. Again, I can't make an informed decision right now because I don't have enough data. So that's my problem.
I think how you solve that problem is that you do an audit. Do an audit on this. You have the comptroller do an audit and have all this equipment accounted for, whether it be the nonprofits that you say you've donated, these dozens of network and audio editing and surveillance.
Are you going to put words in my mouth?
I'm reading your list, surveillance camera.
No, you're putting words in my mouth that I say.
I think that's what you referred to, that in your 12 or six-page memo that you sent us.
Commissioner Lober, I think this will help clear you out if we do this and just get it done.
And if there's nothing nefarious, then you've got nothing to worry about.
I didn't say no, do it. But I'm just saying, you're putting words in my mouth that I never said.
With what, sir?
When Commissioner, or pardon me, Chair Zonka is saying, you say.
No, I'm reading your six-page memo that you sent out.
Well, then read it. Don't paraphrase.
Not going to make, I'm not going to read it.
If you're going to make accusations, make them specific enough that I can rebut them.
So with that, I'm going to make a motion right now that we ask the comptroller to do a complete audit and inventory of the items, the dozens and thousands of dollars. That's fine.
Is that through the clerk's office? That's what we would have done.
This money has me the most concerned because it's CARES funding and it was allocated for a purpose. And I just want to make sure that this equipment's accounted for, and I want to make sure the nonprofits or whoever, wherever this equipment exists, I want to make sure it's accounted for, that we have receipts for it. So that's my motion. And with the dates of when they receive the equipment.
I second that. I believe that's going to help a lot, get this behind us.
I think it clears everybody's name. If there's nothing to hide, it clears everybody's name.
There's no doubt. My mind.
Does that apply to all purchase card expenses over that timeframe?
Sure, if you'd like it.
For all offices, I would.
Well, probably, I don't mind either. I think just for the CARES thing, sir.
I've never bought office equipment and computers and networking and audio.
You never asked for authorization from the board to do it. I did.
I think it's the CARES stuff. But no, when Mr. Ellis came in and we got in that big argument, remember? And I think, I think at that time, I had asked, we didn't do this on P cards. I said, it'd be like me going over to the parish and just doing all the reimbursements. And so I think, I think you weren't listening to me. But I think that's why we've got this mess, and we've got to get it straightened out because.
And it makes us all look bad, even if that wasn't your intention, Commissioner Lober.
I think it's going to clear everything up.
It will. Because I want to know where this stuff is.
In all fairness, you kind of did this to yourself right now. We just got to fix it.
Do I have a card, Mr. Heffelfinger? Did you have a card on this item, J5?
No, I think I know what trouble I'm facing. I wanted to apologize for that. So I don't need to come up.
Okay, I don't have any more card. Oh, wait, I do. Joseph, you're going to have to say your last name. I'm sorry.
I put it frenetically on there for you. Give it a shot. It's Chalua.
Chalua?
Yeah, my name is Joseph Chalua. I live in.
It doesn't look like an A at the end.
I'm sorry. I live in Merritt Island. So recently, Commissioner Lober proposed a reduction in the commissioner pay, I guess, to be more in line with the median household income of our Brevard residents here. I'm assuming that's because he.
Is this more of a public comment?
No, this is getting to the point.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And I'm assuming because he wants to save taxpayer dollars. That reduction would have been about $1,400 a year. And then we did these public, or someone did these public records requests and brought these items to light. Right now, then that goes back all the way till March 2020. That brought back about $54,000 in spending, and that's, and about 70% of that, or $39,000, was Mr. Lober's. That's 20 times higher than Ms. Pritchett's. So he also stated that, or most of that was all technology and computer-related equipment. I'd be obviously curious to find out where that equipment is and what it's being used for. But he also stated that being an elected official, or being elected, should not equate to winning a lottery ticket. This kind of spending almost looks like it's not the commissioner's salary, but the, that's the winning lottery ticket, but maybe that P card. So again, I think it's important, obviously, I didn't know you were going to request the audit. I think it's important. But as a constituent of District 2, I believe it's important to find out, or get a detailed explanation of where the money's being, where the items are, what they're being used for. I believe it's important that, you know, if there's any, you know, I think he made a comment that it was inequitable and elitist to be paid a fixed salary. The only thing I find inequitable is the spending here on these P cards. And because, again, it's extremely highly questionable, and I hope you guys get answers. Thank you.
I have some comments.
Sure.
So first off, it's telling that you've conveniently elected to spread misinformation and insinuate things about me, and that you've wasted government resources today, public resources for your political benefit. There was a rebuttal already published by Space Coast Daily addressing what were supposed to have been the best examples of lavish extravagant spending, but you didn't reference that because that's not convenient for your campaign. It's interesting, Mr. Smith, who's in the frontmost row here, who's also running for the same position, has not elected to spread misinformation, instead campaigning on his own merits. You never once requested any information from me about anything, but you come up here and insinuate. There were no questions, so you can sit down unless someone else has a question of you. Thank you.
Do you want to have a question?
Okay, I know. You're fine. Thanks.
Be honest.
All right, so I have a motion on the table. I know Commissioner Smith's not here. I know Commissioner Smith's not here. Do you understand it?
Yeah, my question is, this included everyone's P-cards, correct? I just.
Correct, but I would say that prioritize this one, because this is the one, I guess, at the forefront of the latest controversy and the largest P-card amount that's been purchased.
As long as I'm.
Everyone's P-card purchases are in that frame of time?
Ms. Eddie wants to know if we're doing a timeline, so I don't have to go back to. From when the items started?
Well, I would say from.
2019?
2019 through today.
Why don't we do it, instead of from when I started office, when you started office, and include all of it?
That's fine. I don't even have a P-card, but that's fine.
I don't either.
Let's do that, then.
I mean, do you see, is that in agreeance with that?
I'm easy, I don't even have one.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would ask that the results be brought, you know.
Back to the board?
Back to the, put on the agenda, so, again, I'd like everything done in public. I think that's probably the easiest.
And that's fine, and I would say that includes anybody in the office that has P-cards, yeah. But I, was the motion clear enough to the clerk?
Kathy Prossman, County Finance Director. So is it clear the audit is for just the commissioners purchasing cards?
Commission offices.
Or commission offices?
Yes.
Commission offices?
Yes.
Okay.
From 2016.
From 2016 to the present?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Kathy, I should have had you come up first, I'm sorry. I didn't recognize you, it's been a long meeting.
But I already had that conversation with Rachel, she's committed to doing that.
Do we know how long it's going to take, you guys, I imagine?
I do not know that, no.
And can we use, I mean, I know, if available, can they have access to county staff, maybe for at least doing some of the inventory, if they need it? Do you guys think you'll need county staff?
I mean, we'll be happy to work with them if they, whatever support they ask us for, we'll be happy to help them.
I just want to take it out of the counties, like the audit part out of the counties, because I don't want there to be any conflict or discomfort, yes?
Can we say, the day we were elected in 2016, we can get rid of most 2016, because most of us weren't here, so.
November, from November 1st, because it won't even apply to us, because we weren't here.
Yes, the day that.
The day, the first election day in 2016.
Thank you.
November 16th, got it?
Yeah, and start it as soon as possible, I guess. I'm sure Rachel will call me and thank me later for the extra work, but.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So I have a motion.
And a second, right?
Does that include the definition of third party?
No, that's going to be another motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
But I'm about to read that one, too, in a second.
And you have to call a question, because I passed the gavel for that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Can I, can I see what we're actually voting on? Because I'm confused as to which of the two we're voting on at this point.
I don't think we've actually hit Rita's item yet, I think, because we guys were still mulling through it.
We're voting on the.
We're voting on the audit.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, pass this 4-0, I pass you back the gavel.
Okay, so let's move on to Rita's P-card.
Yes, ma'am.
Or Commissioner Pritchett, I'm sorry.
That's okay, call me Rita. I'm going to miss, Jordan B. made the changes, some I read it into record, make a motion to approve that in addition to the guidance that's set forth in AO 41, the following shall apply to purchase cards issued to county commissioners. One, purchasing card shall be used primarily for day-to-day expenses for commission office and for the purchase of items necessary to operate the commission office. Two, third-party purchases or purchases whereby a third party is the recipient are prohibited. The term third-party means anyone not an employee of the county commission office. Purchasing card shall not be used for the expenses that provide a personal benefit to the commissioner. Bovard County purchasing card monthly reconciliation reports for commission office shall be brought, shall be included in the Bovard County Board of County Commissioners' agenda in the bill folder. I make a motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Lober. I see no lights. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, I think she left. So moving on to public comments. This is Robert. You're going to say your last name for me, because you write really tiny. I'm sorry.
Klimkowski, Robert Klimkowski, 7667 North Wickham Road. Hello, everybody. Happy Tuesday, Tuesday. So, I'm here to speak on public records and public records requests. So last year, 5/11/2021, the Melbourne Tillman Canal Meeting, Water Canal Meeting, was what I spoke on last time, it was basically, a small issue with just two of the members talking before what I thought would be a sunshine violation. And it was Ms. Frank Abadi here and Commissioner Tobias, and it was about the CPI being 1.23% and Mr. Abadi knowing that Mr. Tobias, Commissioner Tobias, would be approving that. And so going back and forth, I found out that that wasn't a sunshine violation, but also that my public records request took three months to fulfill a cost, so the latency there was three months from the date that I asked for the public records until I got a cost associated with that. Cost associated with that was above $200, and a person making about $17,000 a year, I couldn't pay that, I wasn't paying $250 for public records. And I believe the person before me, Ms. Hodgers, was quoted at $985 with a 15-minute absorption of the fee, which doesn't really make much of a difference, so basically $1,000 for these public records, I wouldn't have been able to pay that. And for a sitting member, a COC member, a board member appointed as a real estate member of the board to then be charged $1,000 for her records, doesn't seem right to me. And also, the fact that you would remove her from the board doesn't seem right to me. Also, there's institutional knowledge. I'm an RBT, I'm a registered waiver technician. I may be inactive in what I do, but as I procure, or as I progress in my field, I might become a BCBA, or I have institutional knowledge in my field. And as, I believe, I just did a Googled record search, and Ms. Hodgers is a GRI, a graduate graduate real estate institute recipient, and with that, she has institutional knowledge of her field. So just because she's not a practicing realtor, she is not going around saying that these annuals might not be the best plan for this house, she does have institutional knowledge in her field, so I don't see that correlation there to remove her from the board a day before she speaks and a week after, or less than a week after she publishes an article, it seems that that was retaliatory. Also, with respect to Commissioner Lober's P-cards, it seemed like he was just asking permission, I believe, that he had the lowest budget last year, roughly north of less than $200, less than $300,000, but that the highest budget was Commissioner Pritchett. And it seems that with a P-card purchase, you could ask permission and then get cited for it, but if you were just to go roundabout and purchase whatever you want, you could do that and it not be public records, it would not be public records, but then you have to do an audit. I'm not, I'm a little confused on that process. And with that, I will say thank you. You guys have a great day.
Just so I. I think you mixed a little bit of data together. He does have the lowest office staff in as far as cost, but some of that is trying to determine, like, some offices pay rent, and that's why we went through and put a cap on it.
Remember that was leaving, I believe, you said one of your costs incurred were fringe benefits that your, remember your office was leaving?
She had a payout, yeah. So we're trying to be a little better with that. So I just want to say that in case the paper was hearing that, they didn't think I had the highest budget, so thank you.
Thank you.
Dontavious Smith, the most patient man in the room.
Yeah, how y'all doing? Good morning. First of all, I just want to say, y'all, you guys do a wonderful job, regardless of how y'all vote, bicker, and what goes on, this is a hard job to have. I don't think anyone understands the role of public administrators. So I'm coming on behalf today, first of all, Dontavious Smith, 807 Wilson Avenue, South Wilson Avenue, Cocoa, Florida, 32922. I'm a graduate of Florida A&amp;M University, 2008. In regards to that, my regard, my question, my comment is towards Mr. Lober's comment as well as to the salaries of commissioners. I don't care who runs, I don't care who gets selected. This job pertains a lot of ingenuity, a lot of energy, a lot of education, a lot of things you may not understand, far as politics, economics, law, science, budgets, reporting, analysises, that you guys may never experience. So to have a median income as a legislative body, as a governing body, I think that's kind of insulting to the profession. It's insulting to students who are going to school for public administration, economics, business administration, and those of the like. And as Ms., I'm sorry, Commissioner, Chairwoman, Ms. Christine said previously, one of those meetings you had before about the salary, if you want a LeBron James, if you want a Tom Brady, you cannot attract them with a median household income to do a legislative body job. So with that being said, I wish you guys, for the Charter Review Committee, to understand that the median household income for any constituent, I'm sorry, any commissioner to have a median household income to do a legislative body job is insulting to the profession and insulting to the constituents, because now you're watering down the integrity and the character of those who may run, because now it's only two options, I mean, two results that this brings. Either keeping the rich in power, or the rich and wealthy in power, or you're not allowing the opportunity for those who are not available to have the funds to run, or even have the available funds to live, to run. So I think the, your efforts are, as far as your initiative to lower the tax rate for property taxes for constituents is a wonderful idea, but that's when the ideas of new forms of revenue, new forms of things that can bring money to the county that don't have to necessarily provide tax properties for increases for constituents. So, great idea, but I think you guys need to increase, or remain the same, or either increase you guys' salary. Thank you very much, have a good day. Bye-bye.
Thank you. And I'll just say it again, it's like you're asking someone to either give up their profession, or you're going to have a bunch of rich retired people running, and I don't think that's a good representation of the average citizen, so I'll stick by that. It's not, obviously, a moneymaker, because most of us could make more working full-time in the private sector, but I don't think you're going to attract the people you want to attract if there's a pittance for a salary, but. All right. I think, I don't think I have a card for you. Does the board have a problem if he fills out a card and does public comment?
Fine by me.
Okay, just fill out a card for the public comment.
So I don't know why Commissioner Lober would make this about politics, it's simply about transparency and the perception of the constituents that he's supposed to serve. I think anybody who looks at the list of items that he's purchased has nothing to do with politics, it has to do with spending. I mean, when you make certain statements regarding income equality, and then you make purchases that are probably more than a lot of the majority of the people that live in your district, it just seems a little odd to me, and pointing that out, I don't believe is an issue. Again, I simply look, as an elected official, you should be looking at how you can improve people's lives, 100% transparency, especially with money, and that simply was my, the purpose of exactly why I was up here. So if there's any questions, again, that anyone has regarding what I said, feel free to, happy to answer them. But other than that, I just want transparency like everybody else.
I have some questions, since you offered. Prior to entering into the D-2 commission race, have you ever set foot in this room before?
I have not.
Have you ever offered public comment here prior to entering the race, since you say it's not about politics?
No, I began my political advocacy for the children in the school district.
So that's a no?
Okay, let's.
Well, he offered, I mean, he came up, I let him speak.
But this is not to an item, this is getting really personal.
Yeah, this isn't even related to this situation.
Because in all fairness, he didn't come up and even say he was running up for office, you offered that.
Let me ask, since you talked about spending in one commission district having a multiple of the others, did you actually look at the funding sources for their spending to determine which was the highest and which was the lowest?
I didn't look at the overall, I simply looked at what the P-cards were on, and analyzed what you were purchasing, and I tried to relate why exactly. You need to have up to $500.
You answered my question, so.
I'm just curious why you need up to $500 in nuts, bolts, washers, and screws, and I'm just curious.
You could have asked me.
What is it for?
You could have asked me at any point in time, you came up here instead. Did you read the Space Coast Daily article that addressed supposedly the most egregious ones, or did you not bother with that?
I don't, why would I go and read a news article when you're responsible for answering these questions?
You have to ask them in order for them to be answered.
All right, now we're taking everyone's time. Guys, that's good. Order, is this some order?
She's going to do an audit, and that will bring accountability for everything.
We're done talking, guys. Okay. Mr. Vate, board reports.
I have no report.
Ms. Jordanby?
No report.
Ms. Pritchett?
I do have one request, Madam Chair. I don't have a report, but I thought with all of the conversations we've had to have to get through to this time period, I'm really sorry, because I know it's late, but I don't think it's fair, the ending information we stopped with Ms. Virginia Barker. So I would request that staff, and particularly, believe it or not, John Denninghoff, would fill us in on some of this, because it was alluded that she wasn't trying to get information out, and it's just, it's just not fair. So I just want to clear this up a little bit. Mr. Denninghoff, with your permission, Madam Chair.
That's no problem. Yes, Commissioners, the, between the dates of about, January 26th to February 16th, there was 17 emails from one individual and 15 emails from another individual who were making a variety of requests. Some of them were actually public records requests, or stated as being public records requests. The, approximately 22 of those were actually public records requests. There was another nine requests for reports that were not a matter of public record, they were just, and they were asking for a report to be prepared. And then there was numerous questions and other statements that were embedded into the emails. In several cases, there was requests that were made by the director of the department to clarify the questions, in some cases, the questions were just restated exactly in the same format that they were, and in other cases, they were rephrased, sometimes clarifying and sometimes actually asking for more public records on top of that. So those were happening in pretty rapid fire, in many cases, they were happening throughout the day, on weekends, in one case, on the holiday, that I can recall, and some of them quite late in the evening and on weekends, as I said. So without creating a new record, many of those reports couldn't be produced, because they, not a public record, and in many cases, there were questions being asked why the records weren't being kept in that format. And the, so, just wanted to characterize that as to what the situation was, in a rather short period of time, a rather large volume coming in, and in one case, one of the emails was over 20 pages long with numerous requests embedded within it, and so you had to go through carefully just to find what the actual requests were, and so that's the sort of thing that was having to be dealt with.
Thank you. I do want to note that the vote for the SORAL plan was on January 21st. Right after that is when all of these email requests started coming in. And then right after that, I mean, you can find it right here, surprisingly, they decided to do a personal email campaign on her, suggesting she wasn't doing something right. And so what I believe that happened is that they were shot down 6 to 1, and so then this became personal, and we went down a rabbit trail of trying to get her, trying to defend what she did on a personal level. And so, you know, those things with public records, whatever, come out, but that's why I had great concern that her time was getting tied off, and not able to get us information. So I, I just, I think that the public records requests have been tried to be responded to as, as quick as possible, but Commissioner Zanka brought this up. When you're asked to put together a spreadsheet from data, you're talking hours, and you are creating a new public record. I didn't even think about that. Thank you. But some of these things take time to, to put together and try to get out, but when the motivation is because you're mad, because your vote didn't get counted six to one, I mean, it, it kind of speaks volumes. So I just want to say that on behalf of Ms. Virginia, because I think she's been taking the bad end of this right now, and she works so hard, and she's really good at what she does. We don't always agree with her, and we make her go back and do other things, but she's always handled it like a trooper and a professional. Ma'am, I just want to say that. Thank you.
And I'll just add, when we clearly don't agree with the plan, we send it back. We've rejected your plan before. We've given you a pretty tough time about it, and we had the whole board met at us at one point, so it's not like we're not reviewing it. We're not asking you to rubber stamp it ever, and I'm sure the Board's aware of that, and this Board will never rubber stamp it, at least as it sits. So it definitely has good oversight, and I think you've got a number of people on there that want to do the right thing, so, thank you. All right. Commissioner Loeb?
It's been a long enough day.
Commissioner Tobia?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, uh, I want to, uh, thank, personally thank Virginia on this one. The cost at nine hundred dollars may seem absorbent, but when you do the basic math and figure out there were more than seven thousand pages, and, you know, that's about four thousand minutes, uh, so she was gonna go through a page in less than a minute. That is really darn diligent on mine. If you're gonna do a public record request, you should probably make it very specific. So, hey, was there any Seegras email from January first to January third? You'd probably find that the results you got would, A, be more helpful, and B, would be a lot less money. Here's a request that I make, uh, and I don't make many of the public, but I am going to make one. Please feel free to attack any of us up here, any of the five of us, to be very clear. But it's beyond the pale to attack staff. Staff is working as hard as they can. You see that, goodness gracious, there's an article in the paper about all the vacancies out there. You know, these, these folks don't have to, these folks don't have to be here, and they have the ability. We lost a great staff member that went and worked for SpaceX here at the last one. We, we, we are, we are losing folks. So, uh, you know, please feel free, often, as often as you want, get up here on a microphone and attack any of the five of us, justified or not. I encourage it. Makes these meetings that much more interesting, but please, goodness gracious, it's like me attacking families. It, we just, it, it's just not, it's not, it's not fair. These folks are trying to do their level best. If we had a, uh, any indication that anyone was doing anything maliciously, goodness gracious, I think that that's something that needs to be handled immediately, but there's no evidence even slightly indicating any of that. So please direct the stuff. Again, you're more than welcome to do whatever the heck you want, but please direct the stuff at, at the elected folks, not the folks that didn't sign up for any of this. It's completely, completely unfair to folks that are working their level best, that have opportunities to go, uh, to go other places. So, again, thanks for all your participation, but just aim, 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 aim up here.
I would request you aim it towards Commissioner Tobia, though.
Mr. Vate, is your light on, because you forgot something?
Yeah, no, there was one item, uh, Virginia had some information on that SpaceX issue, and she just got it, so she wanted to be able to share it.
Okay.
If, if you want a, so we can respond with either comments or a request for a public meeting, and I can do that as staff, but if you want that to come from the Board, then today would be your last chance.
Do you think you'll get a better response if it comes from the Board?
I'd like to make a motion, if we could, to have them do a public meeting.
Especially if it's about holding a public meeting, you're, I would guess that coming from the Board is-
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett to request a public meeting?
Yeah.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Thank you. And thank you, Nathan, for bringing it to our attention. All right, I don't have any report. I would just, you know, echo a little bit of what Commissioner Pritchett said. Just, you know, before, before you believe the hype, actually ask the questions, because although it's exciting and, and you, you sort of make yourself relevant when you make a lot of accusations, make sure they're true, because, believe you me, it's not Ms. Virginia that would be in trouble for not doing the right thing. It's Frank, and I don't think Frank would have people work for him that weren't doing the right thing, because that was my first phone call. And if you're that concerned, and you, you aren't just looking for some attention by writing an op-ed, contact your commissioners. I mean, this constituent has my cell phone number, has contacted me about things that were unimportant at times, so, again, if it's really about the issue, call me. I'm, I'm more than happy to address it. And not about necessarily the public records request, about, about the urgency of stopping